Together, it's January sixth, Monday, and it is six thirty-one P M. I'd like to start with introductions. We'll start with Brian, please.
Brian Bauer.
Jamie Callum.
Steve Orzak.
Ellen Wielandwies.
Joanna Doria.
Tricia Allen.
Ellie Rom.
Chip Malcolm.
Suzanne Buck.
Wendy Baker.
Mary Heather Noble.
Laura Harfan.
And then Matt?
Matt Gretti.
And then our administrators that are in the audience, but they like to introduce themselves.
Jen Havics, Mary Hogan.
Jenny Urban, Bridgeport Principal.
Eric Cisiris, Salisbury Community School Principal, Ridgerton Elementary School African Principal.
Kayden Steele, High School Principal.
John Ursell, Shoreham Elementary.
Courtney Crown, Director of Teaching and Learning.
Emma Stein, Director of Strategic.
Claudia Backhager, former elementary school.
Kigella Whistle, moms.
Bruce McIntyre, Director of Facilities.
Great, thank you all. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
It's not moved.
Jamie? It's been moved to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Ellen? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion's passed. As it is typical, we always have a public comment session at the beginning of our meetings, and we also have a second one at the end. This is a time where a public can come and tell us what they're thinking, what they're feeling. It's not a time typically for a given back and forth with the board. Do we have numerous people in the audience that would like to speak tonight? If you raise your hand. Three, four. And do we have any online?
One.
One online. Would the people in the room mind if we went to the person online? And you would have three minutes? I can't even read whose name it is.
It doesn't have a name. It's just letters and numbers.
Hello, online? Hello? Can you hear us?
It's Sarah Ingersoll. Can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome, Sarah. You have three minutes.
I have very quickly read Wendy's email that just came to us today as the summary of what's going to happen today in the board meeting. And I don't have strong data or anything to advocate for what I need to say. But I do need to say that we are at a time when students are finally feeling settled. And as our staff, I think, I feel like we've had fewer incidents at Mary Hogan. Anecdotally, I haven't got the data. But the presentation of the budget as it stands right now, it feels extremely disruptive, potentially for morale. And I think that we all need to really strongly consider faculty and staff morale heading into another challenging year, still feeling the effects of COVID, still dealing with lots of academic concerns and emotional behavior concerns. And the kind of cuts and changes that are being presented feel very disruptive and potentially highly impactful for morale in a negative way. So that is what I'm, I've just seen from the brief time that I've had to read the summary and from a little bit from our principal. But I just want to put that out there and make sure that you all really paying close attention to that. While the changes might be very well conceived and, and very well supported and advocated by the state, I just think we need to think about morale. So thank you for listening. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. Sarah, before you go, what town are you from?
I'm from Middlebury.
Thank you.
Thanks.
In the room, I saw four hands. You survey start. May, please say your name and town for the record.
Okay, my name's Ed Wheeler. I live in East Middlebury. And we've been discussing a lot, the gender dysphoria and transgender issues. I just want to point out one thing tonight. I found this in the UK Guardian newspaper, that they have banned indefinitely the use of puberty blockers for anyone under the age of eighteen. This was done by the Department of Health and Social Care. And then immediately it was challenged in court and went to the highest court.
Jamie, I am from Middlebury. I am a board certified internal medicine physician. And I've served as a hospitalist at Porter for the last thirteen years. And I would just like to follow up to what Mr. Wheeler said in that there are very serious medical complications from the use of puberty blockers. Not at risk for osteoporosis. How much more so are prepubertal adolescents who have not yet laid down an adult bone stock? And the medical profession just simply does not have the observational data to know what these people are going to experience by the time they reach their late thirties and early forties. So my concern is certainly for the health of the individuals, but also for potential liability for the school district in the future, especially if a policy is followed that would encourage the use of these agents without obtaining proper informed consent from the parents. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. There was four hands, I thought, earlier? Your name and town, please.
Hello, my name is Zanthy Kilzer. I'm a resident of Ridgerton and an employee of Mary Hogan. Thank you so much for receiving and hopefully some of you have had the opportunity to read the letter that I wrote you earlier today. I am here speaking about the budget and specifically what I felt was coming in the budget, which was that you will see a proposed reduction in behavior consultant positions. I'm here to express my concern with that and to reiterate some of the points that I made in that letter. Behavior consultants really provide a vital service that is versatile to meet the needs of the students and teachers at schools. We help reduce barriers to equity for some of the most vulnerable students, students who experience mental health concerns, have exposure to trauma, lagging skills, developmental disabilities, and host of other reasons why behaviors might arise. And each behavior reduced, each opportunity to teach a student a skill as opposed to using a behavior to get their needs met is not only an opportunity for that student to succeed and achieve academic success, but it's also an opportunity for the entire school environment to benefit from a calm learning community. I think each behavior consultant position is really vital. And I would encourage the board to consider the needs of the students and this community as a whole when seeing the proposed reduction in behavior consultants and thinking about how we can best serve our students and ensure equity for all. Additionally, behavior consultants support teachers. They support teachers in their understanding of these needs in creating accommodations for students that not only help individuals.
Thank you. Sarah, anyone else for public comment?
Andrea Way, Middlebury, and ten-year teacher at Bridgeport. Good evening. As the board and district does the difficult work on the budget, I would like all to take into consideration how you determine equity in staffing and meeting the needs of each individual school. Equity should not be defined as everyone getting the same thing, but the things that are needed for the students being served in each school. A class of fifteen in one building is not equal to fifteen in another. We need to look at the makeup of the group and take into consideration how many are on I E Ps, five oh four, behavior plans, see the school counselor, and incident reports. I understand that guidelines and policies are needed to help with decision making, but I ask that there be consideration toward thinking about the percentages within a class and the overall school. If the size of the class and percentage of those receiving supports in order to access their education were taken into account, rather than capping a class size, it would allow for another view of what the students, teacher, or school will need in order to provide the best education possible. As a teacher in a rural school, there have been many years when I've had a small group with the number of students on I E Ps, E S Ts, and/or behavior plans well over fifty percent. It is extremely challenging to meet the needs of all those learners without the support of an additional adult at times in the classroom or without the daily access to services. As teachers, we need access to other resources throughout the day in order to meet the needs of our students and our class. We have been stretched thin, especially in the past few years, and to think about losing more while the needs of students and family increases is concerning. Some of the proposed reductions will take access to services and support away from not only students, but teachers as well. For example, losing a full-time school counselor who serves students daily and assists when students are having a difficult moment or a need that cannot be fulfilled within the classroom setting will be detrimental. As educators, we wear many hats, and in order to do our job, we require the support and resources needed. Please see our schools for their individual needs as we do for our students. I encourage a deeper look into how things are being distributed and if the proposed model of equal access to various staff, services, and supports is providing equity.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to make, excuse me, a public comment? Is there anybody else online that would wish to make a public comment at this point? Please raise your hand. I would say that there are no further comments at this point. We'll move on. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of December sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four? Jamie?
It's not moved.
Thank you. Is there a second to Jamie's motion to approve the minutes of December sixteenth?
Second.
Laura?
Of December. Read by Jason and myself. First is for the general fund of one million, five hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. Big number. Of that, student transportation was about a hundred and sixty-five thousand, and teacher retirement was about a hundred and eighty-six thousand. That makes up two hundred and fifty-eight, six hundred and ten thousand and seventy-eight cents. So I, there were, our questions were answered, as they always are. If we had any, and we, or I make motion to approve the bills as read.
Do I have a second to the motion to?
I'll second it.
The motion has been moved and seconded to approve the A C S D, A C S D bills as they were read. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion's passed. It's now time to hear from our favorite members of the year.
All right, so yeah, we're back to break. It's only like the third day back at school, so we're still getting settled back into our classes. But as the semester comes to an end, the underclassmen are basically gonna have a whole new schedule with, it's basically like beginning of the school year all over again for a lot of them because the semester has classes now. So that'll be really interesting to hear about how that goes. And I talked to some of them in my clubs that I'm in and stuff. And some of them, you know, feedbacks up and down. But yeah, it'll be interesting to hear how that goes. And then same with those semesterized classes switching. The I V students, which I'm a part of, are extended essay classes finishing, and then we're gonna start writing those essays. So yeah, that is what's going on right now.
Does anybody have any questions? Steve?
So as you've settled into the new schedule, is that working out well for most of your peers? Or have you hit any snags or?
Personally? Yeah, yeah, it hasn't happened yet, but personally.
It's coming down the pike. Second semester hasn't hit yet.
It's in like two weeks, but yeah, yeah.
The change in, the change in the whole.
The morning and all in general.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think the morning change is really good. And some people have complaints about coming into school for like clubs and stuff early, but it is the same time that we used to come in for just general school. So personally, I think it's, it's so much better. And I think, you know, some of the underclassmen have said like, oh, it's hard going to the same class every day. But I think, you know, you're so much more grateful when you don't have to go to that class now that the semester is over. So that's sort of like give and take thing. But overall, I personally, especially for upperclassmen, I think it's working a lot better.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, we shall move on then. Report of the superintendent, Daska Baker, that's you.
Yes. So the first thing, under personnel appointments and resignations, we only have one. It's the resignation of Kathy Farman, who is the A C P middle-level administrator. It's effective June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. You know, as, as you'll see, that Kathy's position is also proposed, you know, not to carry forward into the new year, which is something that she also knew. But it was important to her to just submit a resignation, which she did in December, so that she could work for their team, you know, and do so in a, in a, in a public way. So that's here for your approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the personnel appointment and resignation? Please? I know I don't.
I'll just keep doing it.
Usually.
Yes.
I know, it's not me. So Jamie, are you accepting the resignation of Kathy Farman? Effective in June?
Yes.
Do I have a second to Jamie's motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the resignation of Kathy Farman effective June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, seeing no hands raised, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
No.
Thank you. Motion's passed.
So in terms of the budget presentation. There. We have two presentations for you tonight. I get the short stack of slides and Matt gets the long stack of slides. My job, sorry, is at that point, that it was a real priority of the board to make sure that you are allocating your resources in an equitable way. And, and in this process, we've taken a number of steps to help to do that, you know. Mainly, we've brought transparency to the process, you know. We've labeled things in different ways so that it becomes more apparent where money is going and what it is that students are, are getting in various different spots relative to that. And we've looked at a number of other pieces that, that I'll, that we'll talk about here as we go in order to help you achieve that goal. You set us a feasibility target of two percent. We've met that, kind of, in the sense that we've met it around the top line, you know. And Matt will take us through some of the, some of the ins and outs of that as we looked at how to operationally do that. He'll talk about the fact that we are not applying the F Y twenty-four fund balance into this budget so, so that we will be making a different recommendation to you around. And so there are some complications in terms of meeting your target, but, but I, we delivered something for you that I think meets your expectations. And this is the first full budget where we've taken into account your strategic plan and looking at how are we gonna allocate funds that relate specifically to that. So one of the first steps that we took, you might remember, is any financial manager in the district office took equity-based financial management training and really learned the ins and outs of that. That's the same training that some of the folks that have led the way in Vermont have undertaken in this area, and, and we've used it on a daily basis as they've come back. We've used a zero-based budget strategy, which means we've taken all the furniture out of the house, put it on the lawn, and then put things back piece by piece based on kind of where we are now. And the district has changed substantially over the years. You know, you've gone through a pandemic. You've, you've gone through unification. You've, you know, moved to a, a different curriculum model for coordination. So there are a lot of things that have happened since the last time this probably happened. This is a practice that's recommended every four to five years, you know, just to sort of make sure that, that things don't grow or inequities that are in the budget don't get bigger over time. And we've also restructured funding blocks. So the, the, the way that Matt had begun some restructuring for last year's budget, as I understand it, is by saying, here's some operational pieces, and then here are some pieces that are around student need. So we've actually taken that one step further to pull together the seven funding blocks that we've talked about over time, you know, that, that is a model that we intend to continue with so that we can keep tracking year over year. There are some really important drivers behind this budget. We have, you know, to Andrea's point, applied a uniform implementation of class size, policy D six, as it's currently written. And we've looked at comparable staff to student ratios in all buildings, which is your policy D four. It's around comparability to ensure that, that we have comparable staffing ratios, you know, across learning environments. Equitable resource allocation, C twenty-nine is your equity policy. And, and that helped us take a look at places where students, some places students had band and chorus options, other places not so much, right? Some, sometimes, some places people had access to far more guidance time without sort of a data piece behind that than others. And so we've smoothed those things out in the budget in the best way that we can to ensure that everybody's got equitable access. There's a difference, as Andrea pointed out, between equity and equality. And we see that in actually the third attention point there. We looked very thoroughly with the board in the executive session and across, you know, our administrative team at State and, and in many cases, local performance data where it was available to determine, are there gaps in how students are successful in math, in literacy, or in any other place where we currently measure that success? And we have allocated resources in the name of equity support specifically in those schools. You'll see that there are different levels of support in different schools depending upon the performance needs that we've seen. And that's, that's a place where we, we have departed substantially from a model that might be normally thought of as equality, meaning everybody gets band and everybody gets chorus. You know, here, students need very different things. And so they have had an opportunity to have that. You, you might remember that just prior to your June retreat, we surveyed staff in terms of where we needed to be headed related to the strategic plan and discussed that at that meeting. In the fall, in October, we had community conversations and surveys regarding what was important to the public as we prioritize what we knew would be a tough budgeting season. I mean, it's just, I, I, we've discussed at length the difficult fiscal circumstance that we're in, you know. I, I don't think anybody can sustain property tax increases the, the way that they had played themselves out throughout the state. And we understand that, that we need, we need to provide some relief in those areas. And so, so really getting feedback ahead of time as to what was important helped that process. And then, you know, as we keep going, we'll have community input sessions. You know, I'll talk with the staff tomorrow afternoon. The community will have an opportunity to provide input into, into what they see here or other things that might be on their mind on the ninth of January. And, and, you know, we'll kind of continue in that process until we're back here on the thirteenth. So in starting where we're prioritizing, I want to just remind everyone of the targets that are in the strategic plan because they were instrumental pieces of influence for us as we were moving ahead. We've made these slide friendly, so they're not exactly word for word, but, but close in that sense. So, so in belonging, all students, staff, and families say they are self-safely welcomed and included at school. It demonstrated improvement over time. So we have indicators to develop. We have ways of, of assessing that and then strategies that we're putting in place directly that are helping us at scale, you know, as we move forward with that. Some of the other pieces relative to family engagement, we've talked about and have strategies ongoing for. Reduction in incidence of identity-based harm is also something that is an ongoing target for us. We've made some improvements in those areas this year. We have many proactive steps that we can be taking, you know, and, and are, are on our plate as we continue. Strategic planning targets for access. Here, one of the things that we want to make sure that students are able to do is, is have essentially equitable access to opportunity. And our attempt to smooth out some of the differences between the schools in terms of staff and student ratios, as well as some of the opportunities like chorus and band and others, is, is directly addressing that. It's also important that we're able to take data to the third point as we move forward around, is there a difference in, in opportunity access relative to historically marginalized students? That's work on our plate. That's not work that we started just exactly now in a formal way. That's work on our plate and on our minds as we're building the priorities for this particular budget. Success targets played a prominent role in our thinking as we built this budget, in part relative to some of Sarah's comments. It feels like maybe it's the first time in a while that we have been able to, to start to focus on academic rigor in, in a meaningful way across the district, you know, because of the social and emotional turmoil that, that our students and our staff and our families have endured over, over the last number of years. That's taken its toll. And it, this year, you know, has felt like, okay, we're making some progress. And so in planning for next year, the success targets have been front of mind. The Picas report suggests that it's important to set lofty goals, and, and you've done that relative to math and literacy proficiency increases. And so the plan that we built for you responds to that. It says, all right, if in five years, that's where you want us to be, we have to start now. And these are some strategies that we're building that are related to that. Those, you know, the data that we need related to achievement gaps, we, we don't, we don't have right now, other than state assessment data and some screening data. And so that, that's local assessment data that we will need to create measures for and begin to, to log, you know, in order to be able to make achievement there, which, which is partly what we have in the spending plan that we're giving to you. Graduation rates increasing to ninety percent. I, I, I don't think there's any circumstance in which, I don't think about that as a hundred percent. I'm, I'm guessing the high school staff would be in agreement about that. That's how we operationally think about that. Every student needs to have an opportunity to graduate. And sometimes there are barriers that get in the way. And so a part of the spending plan that you're gonna see establishes a significant effort to, to really move that needle in an important way. Okay. So if we keep going here. There are ways in which the strategic plan shows up in the budget. In, under belonging, you'll see that there are, there's an additional position that's created. So we, we will not be refilling the Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Student Services. Instead, we'll be creating two positions, one of which is on this slide. This is Director of Equity Inclusion and Restorative Practice, which is bringing greater diversity and restorative practices that are inclusive to our community, helping us take the good work that we've done in reducing identity-based harm in, in a direction that's developing our community in a stronger way. So that it's, it's not enough to know what they shouldn't do. It's really, let's develop the proactive ends of how we become a community as a whole. Student response coordinators are new in this budget. Mike Dudek has done a wonderful job piloting some of the responsibilities that someone in this role can take on, thinking about a behavioral system that gives us the data to determine if we are. Data that says that students, our way of responding to students or their way of responding to us, it differs based on their groupings, right? And based on a number of other indicators that relate to things that, that we, if we know them, we can do something about them, you know, as a whole. So, so much of the work that, that will go into the job description for those positions, which will, are scheduled to be at all three Middlebury schools, providing leadership also to, to the smaller school administration, will comes from Mike's good work, you know, and I want to make sure to acknowledge that. We're also gonna work hard with that team to create and maintain district-wide student conduct databases. You know, and, and we have new educational quality standards coming out, you know, that we will need to implement in this next school year that, that really embed diverse, inclusive curricular materials into our classrooms at all levels. And so this position would work with our Director of Teaching and Learning to, to make, help make that transition in our staff, which in some cases can be a hefty change. In access, you will see as we go equity supports that relate to student performance data. That's block seven. That's block seven, and Matt will have an allocation for you of what that looks like. We have a new, we have a new budget block created to ensure that the equitable opportunities are visible across the district. That's block six. It's called Student Opportunities. It's a block that the Finance Committee, when they first looked at it, said, what, can we put more money in here? Why do we only have this much money in here, you know? And and I think it's going to be one that in future years we'll have good conversation about what are the opportunities that are probably beyond what the law requires that we would want to make kids eligible for in this district. One of the opportunities that we are, that we are shifting in terms of access for this, in this budget, is access to the Camp Cuaiden Experience, which is a fifth grade kind of coming-of-age experience that not all schools, all fifth graders in each school had equal access to. Some had to fundraise, some could go based on endowments or whatnot. And and this year, everybody gets to go. And in the budget moving forward, everybody will get to go. And and I think that's the kind of thing that I think will be a nice conversation piece for us to have as we go. We also have increases in health FTE. Those positions right now reside at Mums and the high school, although part of the high school's proposal in that is is that part of that FTE can help think about, how can we move forward as a district, a K twelve, pre-K twelve district, to make sure that we're coming into align with the new wellness policy that you passed and the comprehensive health standards that are behind that? So so we don't have increased FTE at the K five level in health in this area. That would be an FY twenty-seven add if the team, as they're moving forward, feels like that's the right approach to that, you know? So so we'll kind of take it one step at a time. Those also represent proactive mental health strategies, right? Health is a proactive strategy for mental health. And and I think, you know, those are as important as the reactive supports that we put in place on the Student Services side. Success, so we have investment in in classroom-embedded math and literacy instructional specialists. That's a new term, I think, to this district. It's it's a highly leveraged practice. And these are folks that we likely already have in-house that we will free up to be able to work side by side with teachers as perhaps lead math teachers or lead literacy teachers in helping our our universal instruction as a whole just just continue to level up in order to be able to ensure that kids are able to perform at higher levels across our system. So one thing that I imagine would be on the teacher's mind relative to that is are these people that are telling us what to do? They're observing what we're doing and they're telling us what to do? What does that look like? And the answer to that is no. These are people who are, who might be accessing training and bringing it back, but they are, they are in there teaching with existing teachers and working with students with the idea of helping us to create a better system of classroom lesson development and execution in math and or literacy where it's needed. And 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 the building principals have sort of thought about that related to how their buildings may work as they put together their triangle plans. So those are sprinkled throughout the schools where the student performance needs relate to them. And then we have additional FTE to develop common local assessments and data teams in support of student success. So so these, this will be, this will feel like a controversial add because it expands the curriculum coordinator team a little bit with the purpose of making sure we can develop interim measures of student success. Because right now, we have our screeners and we have the state assessments. So we really don't have a lot in between that's designed to actually make that crosswalk, you know? And and I, there's a saying in in student performance work called, you know, if you just set the target and you keep it steady, then people can hit it, right? So so these are absolutely one hundred percent true. Under Jim, it was under Jim Lombardo's leadership when he was superintendent. I respected that work very much. So so those, those FTEs are related specifically to our ability to develop those, implement those and utilize those, to have a better sense of how kids are proceeding as they go. The positions that we're going to create in the success targets, I hope, work themselves out of a job, you know? It's probably three years before we're seeing substantial difference in statewide assessments from the results that we're seeing. But those are, they're meant, it's a, it's a, it's a fairly substantial shot in the arm that relates in part to our footprint, but in part to the fact that we're coming out of a time where much of the work that used to be in place had to sunset. And so we're kind of starting that engine again in an important way. And so so that's why you'll see as many positions in this area as as you see. Okay. So thinking about brass tacks, as as Cornwall, you likes to call it. In this budget, you will see twenty-one point two FTEs of new or reimagined positions, which is about a two-point-two million dollar allocation. I've spoken about the Director of Equity Inclusion and Restorative Practice. I've talked about the Student Response Coordinators. We will be shifting from a two-special ed director model to have a single Director of Specialized Services. We, I think, over the next eighteen months have a, have some deep review to do in the way that we're delivering our specialized services in order to to be able to think about, are we, are we as effective as we want to be? Are our impacts where they need to be? And are we as efficient as we can be, you know, as we move ahead? So having a single director that's responsible for that changes the model so that the principals take on more of an LEA responsibility. They will probably take on more of a responsibility. They will take on the responsibility, which I think we've talked about, relative to supervising special educators and things of that nature. So that's, that's a model that Addison Central has known. And so we'll be returning a bit to some of the pieces of that operational model that will allow us to streamline some so that we can move ahead after we have a review, which we will be, we have some researchers in here for some consultant services that will help us with that, you know? It's not my area of expertise. And and there are people out there who know a lot about that and can lead our team through an exploration of that. We're not looking for people to come in and tell us all the answers of that, but to facilitate a good conversation about where we are and and where we might think about going. So the the one-point-five curriculum coordinator ad I've spoken about that's related to local assessment freed up. And in doing that, there's also a restructuring of of those existing positions, such that we're able to focus them more. You know, there'll be somebody that's just stationed at Mary Hogan. There'll be somebody that's stationed at Mums. So that way, teachers have more equitable access to the really wonderful curricular components we have. You know, we, we, we have a curriculum that is reserved for children of wealth in other places. And we present that curriculum to everybody where kids are able to follow their own inquiry, their own interests. They're able to study in transdisciplinary ways. Our math curriculum is a concept-based curriculum. It teaches kids to develop algorithms, not just follow algorithms. You know, there, there are things that we do here that are are maybe no longer the focus of teacher prep programs. So when we have people who are joining us, and we've had a pretty substantial, as I understand, turnover in staff, we have to build those skills. And 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 that would be true, though, that's excellent curricular pedagogy, whatever framework we're using it in, whether it's an IB-sponsored framework or any other sponsored framework. We are, we should, we are proud of that. And that is, that's something that we're working hard to make sure our teachers across the district have better access to training to do in that sense. The health educators I spoke about. One of the things we want to make sure of is that our librarians in each of our schools are able to provide assistance to our classroom teachers and to our students that relate to classroom research projects that come from inquiry work, you know, and come from research that they're doing. And in order to do that, each of our bigger schools need a library assistant in order to be able to cover that space since students independently are able to utilize that and, you know, allow the librarian to be more mobile. And so that's an ad that Mums doesn't have that. And so that's an ad to make sure that they have that resource so kids have equitable access to those librarians who can provide that research expertise. And then we have ten instructional specialists. Six-point-five of those are spread throughout elementary schools. There are six fewer classroom teachers that are in this budget related to an enrollment change on some level. And also, for example, Mary Hogan has fewer kindergarten kids coming in next year and adherence to the D-six class size policy in in the smaller schools. So we're losing six teachers on that end, and we're putting six and a half instructional specialists in those buildings on the ground in order in part to make sure we're helping with those operational pieces, right? Because there, you have to have a certain amount, number of adults in a school in order to make sure recess is covered, right? So that's important. But most importantly, to be able to bring that specialist training inside in a job-invented way into our classrooms. You know, we don't have a lot of substitutes, so we can't free people up to go to different training ends of it. We've got to bring it in. And so this is a way to do that, directly impact kids and leverage a a high-impact school improvement strategy. Three and a half of those will be at Mums. So, you know, that will help tremendously as, as, you know, Mums is trying to ensure that their instruction in math and literacy is both developed and aligned, you know, in part because of the staff turnover that they've had, but also in part because of the curricular specializations that happen at that level, which is just above the elementary level and not quite, you know, more at the high school level. So at the high school, we don't have instructional specialists this year. In fact, they will be losing two interventionists, one in the math area that's unfilled and one in the literacy area, which sort of backs away from that. It advances their graduation initiative with two-point-two FTEs in a flexible pathways team. And it gives us an opportunity to take a look at the existing high school resources and ways that the academic needs there and instructional specialties can be augmented internally. And then if there's something else that's needed, that will be part of an FY twenty-seven budget proposal in that respect. So we are losing nine-point-four positions overall. Those are the ones that we've reimagined from the list of thirty-point-six that we've reduced. Some of these reductions we've talked about already. Point four ARPS is related to fewer classrooms. The eight-point-five general ed paras are, there are four and a half at Mary Hogan and four at Mums. Those are vacancies that have not been able to be filled for some time. So those are not, they're, they're not, they're not currently filled, so it would be removing those positions from our books. The six classroom teachers are enrollment-based. We we just talked about that. The admin on assignment position that we carry, that's currently Mike Dudak's role. He's placed at Mary Hogan somewhat temporarily, right? And that's been a kind of an uneven piece, so we would be sunsetting that role. Point six world language and point six individuals and societies is the high school's, you know, work in terms of attending to the class size policies as well where possible. Sometimes at the high school, you will have specialty courses that that don't, they don't, it doesn't make sense to adhere to that policy, but where it does, you know, they've also come into alignment with that. There's one administrative assistant position at MUHS that's sunsetting, and then the post-secondary coordinator position. Part of the flexible pathways work, you know, will likely involve credit. That credit is better delivered with a licensed position. And so the flexible pathways coordinator will be a licensed teacher, you know, as opposed to a, an unlicensed position, you know, where it is right now. And that job description will be expanding in in to think about pathways to graduation that also help extend to post-secondary work, which is beyond the scope of the position that's there right now. Those, Matt will refresh. You'll see those come around again when Matt talks about block five. You'll see the sunset of the Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Student Services. The the building principals are doing more of the personnel pieces that are appropriate to be done at the building principal level. That's something that, you know, we've worked on together. And and so, you know, they're beginning to absorb maybe some of that work that an assistant superintendent would do and I'm doing so as well. The equity parts of that position are in the Director of Equity Inclusion and Restorative Practice. And the Student Services work is otherwise held with a Director of Specialized Services. So that's, that's, those are the exchanges. The two Directors of Special Education, we've talked about. The ACP middle administrator. We, in our ACP programs and our alternative programs, one of the things that Matt will talk about when he gets to block five is that, you know, much of these, many of these programs were envisioned as part of the consortium, right? Which was three districts together. And and in the two thousand three, two thousand four year, that consortium fell apart so that in this year, we hold all of those expenses. And then that's, that's not what we can afford, you know? And and I, and it's also not necessarily what we're able to sustain in in the way that they haven't grown with tuition students in the way that we might have expected in some ways. So we're going to do some reimagining with our alternative programming that it holds those programs in closer proximity to the high school and to the middle school. Two oh eight, it will be different. You know, that's a program that is developed relative for students with low incidence disabilities. And 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 that program is one that we will probably continue to grow and accept tuition students from other districts into. So so that's, that's a little bit, that's a little bit different type programming. So we will keep all providers that are in the ACP middle program, but we will not be keeping the administrative position, you know, that's there. And that's Kathy Barnum's position that that we spoke about earlier. The Aspire Coordinator was an ESER position, you know, that's at the high school. I think the idea is as we do some melding together, we'll be able to make some efficiencies there. Pre-K outreach special educator is is a position that is just based on anticipated student need. And and we can go perhaps from two to one, you know? So so that's why that reduction is there. The two behavior specialists and consultants. So we have ten FTEs that you'll see later in Matt's presentation that does support the behavior of our students. Of those ten, four provide consultation roles, similar to what Xanthi described. Those positions came into play before COVID. They were expanded a bit, you know, in COVID. And so we're dialing those back to two rather than four. And, you know, those, that's not going to not require us to rethink some things, you know? And none of this is. Every single position on this list makes a difference in our community right now. And so all of them will require us rethinking how we're going to work that. And and that's in a, that's, that's in a point I want to make sure isn't lost as we move ahead. Four interventionists are on that list. Those are ESER-related positions also. Two of them at MUHS I just spoke about, one math, one literacy. And then two of them are at the K through five level. We have fourteen academic interventionists that we carry on our books right now. We're proposing to continue to carry ten. And we will be splitting those, you'll see in Matt's presentation, between those that are helping with IEP services and those who are helping students who need a second time around or some skill building to complement what's happening in universal instruction. And then the speech and language pathologist. Right now, what that represents is we are not using as much of the contracted service. If you remember, we were looking for five. We couldn't find five. And so we contracted with a virtual service to provide that. It, it looks as though we'll be able to to actually have four moving forward in that way. And those really are positions because that's a side letter with the association since we have those, because those are union positions. We can't fill them, and so this is an exception to that. So, you know, we'll start with them as positions next year as well, you know? And that's why it's listed there, you know, specifically as a position. So our net loss. So, our net loss is 9.4 FTEs, you know, and Matt will, you will see those again as you go through those different blocks as a whole. This is my last slide. And, you know, and I want to make sure you have time for questions of me that are, you know, at this 20,000-foot level before Matt queues up his stack. Essentially, you know, this is a budget that prioritizes an inclusive student experience and student success. And it begins deliberate investment in those areas in different ways than we are doing them now and maybe have ever done them, you know, here in recent memory. And part of that is catch-up, truly. And, you know, I think the way we've done that, especially related to student success, has been an extensive review of data. The principals and program directors have all put together the triangles that we've talked about for a couple of months around how could we best make a difference in the data that we need to move and the impacts we want to see for students. And you'll see that the equity supports in Block 7, they reflect those requests. It invests essentially in our first instruction. We have reinvested some of the cost savings that some of the policy implementation has freed up in order to optimize our first and best instruction. And, and I think, you know, that's, that's something that will take some getting used to as we make a shift from maybe investing different resources in recovery than we are in our universal instruction. And hopefully, you know, we're able to move forward in the right direction. But it's, it's a, you know, it's a shift and I don't want to minimize that point in that sense. The way that we're talking about the budget all season really is meant to provide financial transparency and sustainability. Every single expense that we have, every dollar that we spend shows up in the next 23 slides, isn't it? Every single dollar. In, in, in other years, maybe, grand dollars, you know, things like that may not have been part of a budget presentation because they don't, they're not thought of as local dollars and so on and so forth. In our approach this year, we have, we have provided every single dollar that we're spending and exactly where we're spending it, so that you can see that in a transparent way. And we hope that we've built something that's financially sustainable. Taxes are lowered depending on what happens in the legislature in every ACSD town, you know, as a result of this spending plan and the information we have right now. If nothing changes through the legislative session, every, every taxpayer in every ACSD town should see a reduction in their property taxes as it relates to school. And we are also about $1,500-ish below the threshold, which means that's not a challenge we should have hanging over our heads in the same way as we're moving forward. Our, our regular growth, you know, depending on health insurance explosions and all those other things, right, without the unforeseen, we should be able to accommodate and be within the state's reasonable expectations. Our class sizes average, as Matt has shown before, are right around 15 in the K5 level, both at Mary Hogan and in the rural schools. There are challenges with that, as Andrea rightly explains, you know, in that sense. And, you know, hopefully, this is an architecture that will help us to move forward without undue interference, you know, from outside external forces. So, I appreciate the work that's gone into this presentation. The work has largely not been mine. You know, Matt's done a tremendous amount of work. He has rebuilt every spreadsheet that's ever been built, you know, I think here and re-categorized things, you know, re-looked at everything. The principals have done a wonderful job going through their data in ways that are maybe new of late, you know, and, and really working with their teams around where are we going and what could we do and if we could envision something different. And the district team has been instrumental in thinking about how do we take this strategic plan and bring it to life through our allocation and our project management work, right, as we're really bringing things forward so that we can take it off of the plan stage and into the action stage. So, from that standpoint, it's, there are, there's loss in here and that's real. But there's, there are also really good things that are happening here for kids. And we are contending, I think, successfully with a very complex financial situation that I think we're facing well. So, questions for me about this before sending Matt to his slide deck? Steve?
I guess I have two main questions. You said at some point, we would be getting a breakdown by school where the money would be allocated. Some of this did that, but then some of it was vague. And it said six losses at K through five, and that didn't identify the schools where it was going to be. Is Matt going to do that?
Yeah, in Matt's slide presentation, you'll see that. And we'll make sure that you have every, all the information that you need before the end of that deck.
Okay, and the other question was the 9.4, just as a question of clarity. Those are the FTEs that were not reassigned somewhere else?
It's a net loss, yeah. So, if we took the 30 and change, you know, right, and then those that we added, you know, it's the net loss, you know, between the two. It's, it's not a, we took this position out and that person's now going to be doing this everywhere. There are a couple of places where that's true. But in large part, it's thinking about what do we need in order to move us ahead in this new direction? And what is it that we are able to sunset in order to give us the financial resources we need in order to move in that direction and attend to the feasibility target?
So, this is more than nine people that we maybe let go? So, we will be hiring some new people to do some of these other things and letting more than nine people go?
Or we might not even let nine people go. You know, I mean, it really, these are positions and that's how we think about that, you know. We have some extremely talented people in our district and those folks, some of those folks may, for example, really want to do the instructional specialist work, right? And so, so that might free up room for somebody else or a younger teacher, right, that we may not have been able to keep, for example. So, so all of those things are kind of yet to come. You know, I think the, the net loss for, for the board in terms of scope is 9.4, which is, you know, quite different from districts around us, you know, either last year or even this year, you know, as they're trying to do some of the same financial work that we're doing. Yeah, and that, by the way, is very much thanks to Matt because he combed through every single line. You know, when we say we took everything out and put it on the lawn and put everything, put back in what we needed, we're not kidding, you know, that, and he didn't, while, while having a newborn, which maybe is what allowed it to do that. But, but, you know, that, we, much of the reductions you asked us to make did not come on the back of personnel. You know, the changes related to these personnel positions are more related to the strategic plan implementation, you know, and that's thanks to Matt's good work. It would have been a lot easier to say, well, we'll just lose this many positions, right? And that's not the approach that we took. Other questions for me?
Mary Heather?
I guess just sort of a follow-up to Steve's question and thinking about the feedback that we got from families, parents before we started this process, anticipating that this was going to be a really tough budget to put together. You know, I recall when we looked at just the accumulation of all the, in particular, the survey responses, there was a lot of emphasis on, and a lot of, I think, family worry around student success and student support. Can you, and I can kind of see this to some degree, you know, with the, okay, you know, some of these positions are being lost or reimagined. Can you help sort of illuminate that bridge a little bit? So that folks who have concerns about, you know, the support for kids who are significantly behind, how those kids are still being supported by this budget?
So, you know, one of the things I remember about that, that feedback in analyzing some of that and having some of those conversations is it was important in the public to understand, how is this going to impact kids? How will kids, Jamie and I probably remember a conversation with a couple who didn't have kids in the school district, but wanted to know how this budget was going to impact their neighbor's kids, you know, that they saw every day. And some of the other feedback that we have had are around, you know, we, so we have this great curriculum, but how is my kid accessing that? And, and I, I'm not so sure I know that my son or daughter is getting what they need to get in math or literacy, you know, and making the progress they need to make. You know, how, how will I know that? So, so much of our attempt here is really to put resources in place to make the kind of excellence that this district expects part of the lived experience for each kid, you know, that we're having. And, and it's not to say that it's not now. I only do what you can do. In this model, what we're doing is intentionally augmenting that to bring all of that up to another level. Not because you asked for extra time with this person or that person, but because your classroom is functioning in a different kind of way in some of the content areas where we need to. And also, in these, this local assessment work, parents will get more feedback about where their student is at in some of these areas, which right now, doesn't necessarily come as often as any of us need it to come to have a sense of that. And that will, that's a deliberate shift that, that parents, you know, will feel in having a sense as to how their child's doing in these performance areas as we get those assessments built and utilized.
Are there any more comments or questions? If not, we'll move on to Matt.
Thank you for that wonderful introduction, Mrs. Burrow. I'm going to tell the exact same story a second time, or a third if you were with us this morning. But my story is going to be through the eyes of the dollars behind it. So, we have the plan, we're going to reiterate the plan as we're looking at the dollars. But just to go back to one of those highlights on the last slide, transparency is big. And because of the amount of intra-budget transfers and furniture out of the house and furniture back in the house and all of those things, it was really important to do everything we could to keep tracking and traceability on expenses as they moved for the sake of giving everybody a clear understanding of how the zero-sum budget reformed in this year's spending.
Matt, you're a little hard to jerk back here.
I'm going to move ours. Yep, we good?
I guess I wasn't the only deaf one, right?
So, everybody at this point should remember our stack. Here it is one more time in summary for the sake of freshening you up. This was how we reimagined our cost centers this year to focus on strategic equity. Our cost centers are our traditional sections of investment over the budget, everything from district administration to tuition expenses to student services, et cetera. This year, we grouped them together, not just by the cost center that things were in, but by the type of expense. And the first category is Block 1. These are our operational expenses, sort of the foundational element of running the district. The cost centers that nest under Block 1 are the district administration, facilities, technology, food service, transportation, and debt. In Block 2, we have our tuition expenses that we pay out to the Hanford Career Center and Universal Pre-K Providers. In Block 3, we have the personnel requirements. This is the salary and benefit of required personnel that come, that are required by either federal, state, or board policy, so the people that we have to employ. In Block 4, the matching non-personnel items, so the supplies, services, materials that are in the direct instruction in PD and curriculum cost centers. In Block 5, all of the student services. So, these are the expenses that are mandated by IEP and 504 plans for students with disabilities. In Block 6, student opportunity funds, as you've heard about. These are the now visible funds that are created across different bands of students, whether that's age or grade level or what have you, to provide opportunities that augment the educational experience. And then, we have equity investments, our new Block 7, which is the sort of cycle of data-driven investments towards executing the strategic plan. You can see also on the left here that we're kind of going from zero all the way up to about $51.6 million. So, that's a teaser for where we're going to finish here. For the sake of this presentation, we are not going to rehash 1, 2, and 4 blocks because there has not been any major change in those sections from the last several presentations. This summary serves as a reminder of where these are at and is there for reference. You will see throughout the presentation that we did continue our price tagging exercise, usually on the right column and in purple. The price tags are all based on our LTW ADM number, which is the, which is in its third version right now. We're expecting maybe one more small edit, but we're feeling pretty confident at where our equalized pupil count is at today. The previous presentation that used price tags as a tool for understanding big numbers by making them into small numbers used the ACSD pupil count. And so, there's not comparability between that presentation and the price tag in this one, just in case anyone's trying to say, oh, you know, the price tags used to be way higher. Well, we added a lot more pupils by doing it this way. You will see at the end how all of those stack up. We're going to spend some time in Block 3, Block 5, Block 6, and Block 7 first. I apologize because this is going to be a little bit small, some of these slides, so if you don't have them in front of you, you might want to pull up a device if you have it, but we did our best to fit a lot of information on them. Summary of Block 3 expenses, again, these are required personnel coming from two cost centers, direct instruction, PD, and curriculum. What you're seeing here is a reduction in direct instruction of 15% and an increase in PD and curriculum of 126%, which is a ridiculous number. But it's true, this goes to the track, the tracing of expenses. PD and curriculum is largely augmented by the title grants. A lot of those investments were in previous budgets shown as canceling out revenue and expense. You know, we're going to spend this much on title grants, we're going to receive this much on revenue. And those positions never got included in the cost center, even though those positions serve the cost center. And so, by taking everything out, whether it was in the main house or the guest house or whatever, and putting it out, we sort of illuminate them for the first time as a part of the PD and curriculum. There are also changes within the budget. So, the Director of PD and Curriculum is now in the PD and Curriculum Department. And there are those new coordinator positions that Dr. Baker referenced earlier as well. Direct instruction, we have to remember at this juncture, also holds Block 6 and Block 7. And a lot of those personnel, because they are no longer And a lot of those, um, personnel, because they are no longer part of block three, caused that fifteen percent reduction in block three. It doesn't mean that we have gutted direct instruction, it just means that those investments are represented in a different block. Okay? This is a chart that shows our small elementary schools, block three. The next chart will, um, show Mary Hogan, um, a sum of the small schools and middle school and high school. What we're showing here is an FTE comparison, um, across all positions at those elementary schools, uh, for, for all of our core positions held in block three. As we get down to, um, the lower blue sections, we're looking at the outgoing class, the incoming class, and the new projected enrollment for FY twenty-six, how many classrooms that's going to lead to, and then the class size that would be a, um, byproduct of that many classrooms. The two white lines below that show some ratios, so that instructional staff to student ratio is a metric that the state uses, um, to, to determine comparability, and also the federal government. It's teachers, principals, and half general ed pairs for some reason. Um, and then for total core staff, we took all the adults who represented all the, you know, all the FTEs on this slide and compared that to the enrollment. And so as you're going across, you can, you know, compare some of those ratios, um, in, in both of those metrics. AMS, um, just as a reminder, is art, movement, and Spanish, art music.
Arts.
Arts, movement, and Spanish.
Arts.
Where's music? Um, it's in there. And you can see there, uh, that we've got really good comparability in AMS, uh, across the board. One of the things that's happening in block three is it's an enrollment-based block, it's really about rules, what are the staffing rules that, um, create equalization. Um, and by creating equalization in block three, we build a level floor that then, um, allows inequity to emerge and then be addressed in other blocks, if that makes sense. So I think one of the, um, comments, you know, might have referenced concern over class size as a way of not addressing, um, equity, and I think that if you, the, the logic behind equalization of class sizes is that it allows, um, other, uh, resources to be overlaid on top of this in order to do just that, so. These, these little gray lines, I should've popped them up earlier, but they are there to show the number of classroom teachers this year. So you can see a reduction of one at Bridport, one at Cornwall, one at Ripton, two at Shoreham. Going to the next slide. You can see a reduction of one classroom teacher at Mary Hogan, reduction of four and a half general ed pairs. And all of these positions were summarized, uh, by Dr. Baker in her introduction, but this is just, uh, you know, another visual of where they land. When you get to the small school combined column, you, you get to, um, for the first time, look at, you know, sort of one of the major differences between our, our small rural schools and, um, and Mary Hogan. Traditionally, the small rural schools, or historically, I should say, generally summed to about the same enrollment, or similar enrollment as Mary Hogan. You can see three forty-seven, three forty-one in FY twenty-five, three thirty-three, three twenty-five in FY twenty-six projected, same number of classrooms projected. And then there are some things that aren't the same. Um, you know, there's, there's obviously, uh, by virtue of running small schools, uh, the need for more general ed pairs here, uh, you know, school-to-school basis, um, more administrative assistance, because we have to staff each school, um, greater FTE of librarians, um, et cetera, et cetera. Administrators be the other one. At Mums, you can see the, uh, Mums, Mary Hogan, and the high school, you can see the increase there of student response, FTE. Classroom teacher at, uh, the high school is... I feel like that should... Actually, I've got it on this, this slide here. So we're gonna look at those reductions and creations in, um...
Larger font?
Larger font. What we're adding on this slide are some asterisks as well, because it was really important for the sake of traceability to show, um, in, in, on the right-hand side, created column, things that are not bold, but have asterisks, we're tracking where it came from. So a single asterisk in this case is showing a position that was really funded by a reduction in block five, two asterisks if it was funded by a reduction in block three. Things that don't have an asterisk are, uh, bolded, because those really represent new investments that don't directly translate from, from another source. And so in this case, um, in block three, that's the curriculum coordinators and the two health educators. You have to understand the story here of what happened between adopting FY twenty-five budget and looking at the FY twenty-six draft. And that was the actual or adjusted performance within that cost center. A lot of things happened in between then and now to get us where we are. And if we don't track those and keep, uh, sort of a good handle on them, it looks like student services, which is one of the things that we were trying to streamline, went up thirty percent from where we were in FY twenty-five. And that's not necessarily what happened. Uh, as you can see in that middle column, the FY twenty-five adjusted, we started with a base of about seven point eight million dollars in student services. And then we had, uh, by virtue of the creation of a new ACP program at two oh eight and the dissolution of the consortium, which was funding two-thirds of the existing high school and middle school programs, a lot of new expense landed at our, our doorstep with regards to those programs. That wasn't part of the plan. In response to emerging student need in FY twenty-five, we transferred ten point oh, um, paraeducators from their direct instruction, classroom para-positions into high needs, uh, position. And that investment was new money into the FY twenty-five student services budget. Similarly, um, interventionists who were doing work, um, in special education needed to be shown now as, uh, parts of the student services budget. And that's that, that interventionist line. Four of those, as we're gonna see, um, are the ESAR-funded positions, which moved over, um, from twenty-four to twenty-five, and then the other three point oh are the ones that were identified by time studies as the, um, the sum of, proportion of all of our, um, interventionist time that are actually spent on, on those planes. Next, we have our ASPIRE coordinator, which, ASPIRE and five oh four coordinators, these positions were not, um, housed in the, uh, student services budget, but are there now. Um, and then the assistant superintendent of, um, student services and equity was not in student services, and it's shown as a reduction in this cost center or this block, so we needed to show it as an expense, because you can't reduce something that wasn't there in the first place. So if we take all of those and add them up, we get, uh, in addition to our IDB grant expenses, eleven point one million dollars of total student services expense. Now we have something that we can compare to when we're looking at where we're, we're planning to go this year. And so within the general fund cost center, we're seeing that ten point one million dollars, which does represent a three percent reduction from where we were brought to this year. IDB is a federal grant, which means that it's always gonna cancel out, so we're gonna get money in as revenue, and we're gonna spend as much of it as we possibly can in expense, and so there's, there's no variance there, what we get is what we spend. Summing those two, we see, you know, a net year-to-year projection of three, minus three percent in the student services, uh, cost center. I know that was a lot. That's probably the most confusing as far as which room we put the stuff back into and where it came from in the first place and all that stuff. Everybody with me?
We've heard, we've heard it three times, so it's, you know, and it is really complicated, okay?
First time I got it.
But it's also, the more you hear it, it makes sense.
This chart summarizes all of the positions in block five, um, by request, you know, we, we did do a lot of detail on the positions in three, and felt like it was important to have a similar slide that, um, kind of charted block five in its entirety. The format of this, if you're looking at the left column, might look like it's missing things or that it doesn't, uh, have a lot of detail to it, but it's intentional because this is how the state asks us to report our special education budget on, um, on the, the special education reports, SEER report that we have to submit to them every year. And so it's important to understand how the positions that we have in student services fit into these boxes, because that's, that's, um, what the state likes to see. Um, and that's, so that's how we planned it. In bold on the right are the positions where there's a change, either an addition or subtraction between, uh, twenty-five and twenty-six. You can see there a net reduction in personnel in the cost center from one twenty-eight to one thirty-four. And here's another summary. Um, the only position that was created is the Director of Specialized Services. That one was funded by a block five reduction. What was that block five reduction? Well, if you're, um, still paying attention, the, uh, block five reduction, the Director of Specialized Services was the assistant superintendent of, uh, no, sorry, two directors of special education. There we go. So here's again, this, the list which sums all of those reductions, including the ones that needed to be transferred in. And then all the things that, um, will be new in the cost center this year. So when it says transferred in, that means they are still part of the cost center, but they weren't here last year. That's that ten high needs pairs, the two, uh, ACP administrators, the ACP personnel from, um, from the consortium and, and, uh, two oh eight, and then three point oh.
Quick question?
Yeah.
Is it okay? Um, other professional staff and other non-professional staff? Can you clarify what that is?
Yeah, that's, um, other professional staff are CSEC counselors. Um, that's where we report the, uh, contracted services with CSEC. Non-professional, uh, other staff are, um, CSEC, I'm blanking on the acronym.
BI's?
It's similar to BI, but they, it has a...
Are you, is it licensed versus unlicensed? Is that the way we would translate that normally in?
Yeah, exactly.
That are provided to us through a third-party vendor?
Okay. Now we're changing from things that tie to, to specific cost centers to things that really are about the, the investments. Everything that we're talking about is going to be in the direct instruction cost center. In student opportunities, it's important to remember, as kind of a general rule, that it's an opportunity if it's not tied to close credit. Just one, one way of thinking about it. And so here's what we have. The requirement in block three for elementary music is general music. We provide general music, uh, in a fixed amount to each elementary school. We also provide supplemental music, and that can be band or chorus or both, and historically, um, have had, uh, an unequalized or, um, uh, uneven distribution of those supplemental programs. And I think part of this plan in block six is to help, um, even those out and ensure that there's access to supplemental music across all, um, elementary schools. The next two, three are all of the athletics and co-curriculars, including the travel for secondary level. This includes things like equipment, coach stipends, activities directors, salary benefits, um, and all of the, uh, you know, department budgets or club budgets for, for our co-curriculars and teams. The next line is field trips. This is a, an investment that we've had sort of, um, in the, the spending plan for the last two or three years now. It is sort of the first visible student opportunity that, uh, applies to all elementary school students, and it was put in here as a fixed twenty-five dollars per pupil, um, allocation. That has been fixed from year to year, even though elementary enrollment's down slightly, and the reasoning behind that is just that field trips may have gotten a little bit more expensive based on the rate of inflation, and so that turns out to be kind of a wash. But generally, uh, twenty-five dollars per elementary school student goes to field trips. We, we heard earlier about KEK for fifth graders, that's a thirty-five thousand dollar investment here, um, in the FY twenty-six spending plan. And then the last one that we included in block six is IB fees. IB fees. And those are here, and only those are here, because IB is, um, is an opportunity. And the district does not need to, um, to use IB as its coordinated curriculum. In the absence of using IB as the coordinated curriculum, we would still need curriculum coordinators, and that's why the curriculum coordinators are not student opportunities. But the opportunity to have access to IB as the curriculum is the opportunity, and that's why that's, um, broken out here, uh, in the, in the last line.
So for clarity, Matt, that is the entire IB fee that we pay?
Yeah.
So it's only eighty-five thousand dollars?
Uh, sixty-five.
Sixty-five.
But sixty-five thousand.
And that includes fees for, um, DP exams that we pay on behalf of students?
Yeah.
You know, you, you probably at one time, if you offered an AP course, there were AP exams, I don't know whether the school district would've paid for them or not. But we pay for all of those. It, it also includes, um, opportunities that, that I hope we can take greater advantage of in this next year, because we are part of a global community of schools, all of whom have the same curricular units in place. So, so one of the things that IB offers is, is the opportunity to do, to be, have sister schools, um, or brother schools in, in different parts of the country and the world. So as we have, um, you know, this director of equity inclusion and restorative practice that's working with our director of teaching and learning, our hope is that we can actually provide opportunities for kids to connect with much, far more diverse communities than they can hear. And, and those fees also represent the chance for us to do that en masse, and, and that's an opportunity that, um, that I would look forward to having us do more, more readily.
There, there was also that we benefited from the consolidation of the fees for the individual, uh, elementary schools.
Yeah, that was a win.
Which means that, um, no matter how many elementary schools we have, that's probably about where our fees will be, you know? So because they've already given us kind of a grace of, of thinking of, uh, all of our elementary schools as, in, as one bucket, you know, um, as opposed to lots of them, you know, which, which had previously changed our, our fee structure, you know? So this is, this feels like a sustainable piece. So, this feels like a sustainable piece going forward.
And we've made it to the top of the stack, Block Seven. And here we have another summary of the equity investments that you all have been introduced to. 10.0 instructional specialists. 2.2 team members for the high school flexible pathways team. The balance of interventionists that were included in Block Five, which is seven. And then, an allocation of $100,000 for PD and data services. These are, this is sort of the, if you remember the triangle plan, how there's providers, coaches, and system supports. This is really the idea that in order to have a performance-based equity budgeting component to our plan, we need to shore up the investment with the PD and data services to make them work and create that performance cycle to say, hey, you know, this is a good investment, this is a bad investment, or we don't know. Let's do it again for another year. And so, there's money there for that. And then, the last equity piece is a summer and after-school fund with the first installment of that in FY '26 being for Bridgeport and Shoreham. I believe that this is also a hedge against a grant that we're hoping to get and fund that opportunity one way or the other.
Well, yeah, whatever grants we can get, we'll take in that sense. I could say that, you know, I'll ask the principals to tell me if I don't get this right. But instructional specialists, as right now, are allocated, I mean, at three and a half for at Mums. Two are at Mary Hogan, one is at Bridgeport, one is at Shoreham, one is at Salisbury, and one is at Cornwall. Most of them are math-focused. This district, I think we've spoken about as maybe under-invested a bit over time in terms of math. And so, the majority of the data work that principals and their staff teams did related to the need to really pick up our math instruction. And so, there are some literacy specialists in that mix, but the vast majority of that work will be done in math. And as I say, you know, that's an intensive strategy designed for the time we're in. And so, you know, we certainly can talk more about that as we go. Did I miss any or misallocate any? Strategy, okay. The academic interventionists, you know, that's part of, we have sort of tentative allocations and that what we think will be needed in order to support students with that second boost, we'll finalize those in the spring, you know? Once we know where all the kids are. But they have those tentative allocations.
Can I ask a question about the instructional specialists?
Yeah.
If enrollment changes in schools requiring the retention of classroom teachers, where now we're seeing an anticipated reduction, will we then be hiring new personnel to fill in the instructional specialist position that that reassigned classroom teacher might have otherwise filled?
So, it was way too early to be talking about where we would be hiring in that sense. However, if there are classroom teachers that thought they might be leaving their classroom because it's a classroom that's not there and has decided to do another opportunity or, you know, that's come out of our instructional staff in some way, and we need instructional staff back because we've got an influx of enrollment in either Cornwall or Ripton or, you know, the other schools where that's coming from, you know, then we would reassess and post, you know, the appropriate positions once our staff have, you know, determined where they'd like their focus to be next year.
I asked just because I think based on the projected enrollment numbers that we most recently looked at, there are a few places where their class sizes are maybe eight or seven. So, a shift up by just a few kids could mean that we triggered D6 class size and, you know, conflicts if you were to merge too big, et cetera. So, it seems like a real possibility that we would be...
And, yeah, and financially, for financial strategy, we've made sure to add staff here that is a placeholder so that we, you know, like we've got an extra para in Cornwall so that, okay, that's roughly half the cost of a teacher so that if we need to draw from contingency funds to make that shift because we got a whole bunch of kindergartners coming in in Cornwall, then we're prepared to be able to do that in this budget. Same thing in Ripton, you know, if that, if...
Or Salisbury, it looks like Salisbury could be similar, but yes.
Yeah, Salisbury doesn't have a loss of a teacher, so that's okay, you know? But in those two places particularly, you know, we'll have to kind of see where things are based on how your conversations go. So, we believe we've built enough of a financial strategy into this budget to be able to take care of that, need be.
So, yeah, just one more time summarizing all of the Block Seven positions. And on to the summary. So, now, we're going to look at all those blocks stacked up to our total expense. And then, we're going to also pull those price tags back in together to show how those all look in comparison. So, here you can see each of the seven blocks with the proposed budget, summing to the total of $50,318,926. The corresponding price tags on the right, summing to $18,385 per LTW ADM. Just as a reminder, that's the metric there. Now, remember that price tag because that, as we were talking about earlier, includes every single dollar in the district's expense budget, including everything that comes from a federal grant, a state grant, or other. That is not the same as the per pupil spending amount that we're going to determine based on our ed spending, which we're going to look at next.
It is, however, one of the things I think that's important is that it is in the same language, which will allow us to be able to share information with legislatures as this legislative session opens and continues, as we expect them to contend with the idea of a foundation formula. What should that look like? What should that mean? We're able to translate exactly where all of our dollars go per long-term weighted average daily membership in the weighting structure they created so that we're able to have those conversations in an apples-to-apples way. So, if we were fully funded by a foundational formula at, you know, from the state, we would receive $18,385 per long-term weighted average daily...
Membership.
Person, right, number. That's what I was trying to translate. So, the difference between the two, as Matt's going to say, is our grant amount. You know, those are our federal grants and whatnot that come into play. So, that's why the difference is there. Go ahead, Matt.
So, yeah, we can, again, just see about a $4,000 difference there per LTW ADM. And we're transitioning now into taxes. In order to do that, we have to start with our total expense. We've backed out the fund balance because fund balance is never the same year to year. And it's not included in the education spending. So, for the sake of comparability and calculating ed spending, we're just not including fund balance as an expense or revenue in this, at this time. To get to ed spending, which is the amount to be raised by taxes, we start with our total expense and then we back out all of the offsetting revenue. That's all of our federal grants, our census block grant, other state grants such as the transportation assistance grant, the school consolidation merger grant, the English language learner grant, tuition revenue that we receive from other districts who pay to have their students attend ours, et cetera. And all of that sums to $10.9 million. That yields an ed spending of $39.3 million. And for comparison, we are at $40.04 million in FY '25 with a difference of about $711,000. That means that even though our top-line total expense went up 2%, which is exactly what $50.3 million is, our ed spending went down 1.78%. And that's largely because of the increase in revenue. And the largest part of that increase was from the census block grant, which were in the last year of that equalizing to a uniform base amount for FY '27. So, we have one more year where we received an extra $390,000 in revenue for special education. That pushes us from a growth budget of 2% to 1.78 reduction in ed spending.
Which is what we are asking the state to contribute to our education drawing down from that ed fund pot.
So, now, we're into taxes.
There are only three slides, right?
First, we have to calculate our per pupil spending. And to do that, we bring in our LTW ADM, which again is not frozen or finalized yet, but we're projecting it to be pretty close to this. No real variance expected. That yields our per pupil education spending when we divide our ed spending by the pupils of $14,370. For the sake of comparison, that's down close to 11% from last year or from this year. Now, harkening back to when we were breaking down the LTW ADM, you might remember that we went up about 10% in that number, largely due to an increase in direct certification numbers bumping up our students living in poverty. So, that data bump gave us kind of an unprecedented 10% increase in LTW ADM. That's not going to happen again, but it happened this year. And because we got more weight applied for this budget, we're seeing the benefit in bringing our per pupil ed spending down about 10% or 10.7%. For reference, the excess spending threshold this year is 15.9. That's calculated as the average of the state's per pupil spending times, I think it's 118%. So, if you're within, if you're over 18% of the average after it's adjusted for yearly inflation, you've passed the threshold. Now that we have that done, we need to calculate our district tax rate. And this year, you might remember, that's called the adjusted equalized district tax rate. We start with the homestead property yield, which is still in its first version and will need to settle into a final version before it's made law. But for now, it's adjusted to $8,553. Dividing our per pupil education spending by the adjusted property yields gives us an adjusted equalized district tax rate of $1.68. We also have to adjust our discount. And because we get a discount this year of 10 cents and then divide it by 0.72, which is the approximate state adjustment factor, our 13-cent discount this year becomes a 13.8 cent discount next year. You might remember that weird math from the tax presentation two weeks ago. We then apply that discount to get to $1.54, which is our discounted, adjusted, and equalized district tax rate and the number that would go on the ballot. For the sake of comparison, everything in italics below gives us an idea of how that stacks up to where we are this year. We've taken the adjustment factor off the yield to show that it would be about $11,879 if we were to not have adjusted it. Our discount would have been, sorry, that should say 10 cents. That's a typo, but we'll keep rolling with it. Our unadjusted equalized district tax rate then would be $1.24. And let's see. Yeah. And so, yeah, I just have to add 11, $1.11. Anyways, the comparison is that, you know, we've gone down about 28% year to year. And that might actually look a little bit more like 25% with the typo removed from that.
Matt, just to...
Yeah.
So, just from a messaging standpoint, the adjusted EDTR, the discounted adjusted EDTR that we're looking at for fiscal year '26 is going to constitute a 28% reduction from last year.
Yeah. Even though on paper, it looks like a state's average.
Got it, okay.
And that gives us some high CLAs, which you're going to see here in that projected adjusted CLA column. Report with the highest of 149%. That does not report CLA from their equalization study. That is their equalization, or CLA adjusted by that state average to show where they are in proportion to the average property values across the state. Just like we adjusted everything else, we adjust the CLAs. Those two adjustments then cancel each other out. So, what we're left with is an actual tax rate, free of any adjustments. We can see there the $1.54 plugged in as our district's generated tax rate coming from the school budget. When we apply the adjusted CLA to the adjusted tax rate, we get the projected town tax rate. And you can see them there for each town, ranging from $1.3 all the way up to $1.91. For comparison, you can see the FY '25 tax rate for each of those towns. And then, what the difference is in both amount and percent. And some substantial changes, ranging from 51% to a 10% reduction in property tax rate generated by the school district. I will just say that note on the bottom shows that the projected adjusted CLA has been finalized by the equalization study, which came out on the 26th. And so, we can confirm that that column will be as is for the rest of this cycle. This is it.
So, we do have the administrators in the building. So, would you, would any of you like to say anything about what we've been through before I have the board ask questions? Or are you feeling up to having board members ask you questions or...
Can I ask a question about this slide before we go? Or do you want me to wait, Suzanne?
Well, they've just been waiting so patiently. I just thought I'd give them an option to chime in. Administrators like to chime in, say anything? You've been so patient? Okay. Ellen?
Oh, well, I can't answer VRK's question. I can't make it more specific. But I was actually wondering, Matt, you presented a slide pretty much with the same information as last year, right? That projected the percentage increase, at that point, it was increases that towns were going to face. Would it be possible to pull that, or even if you give us the date that we could find it? I actually think it's going to be really important to show the comparison of the percentage change that towns faced last year versus what they're facing this year. So, it's not just that it's a decrease, is that last year?
Yeah, yeah, that's definitely possible. And I'd be happy to put that to you.
It's also important to understand that, you know, we do control spending, right? That is within our power to control. We do not control, really, most of the variables that lead to how things work out in terms of taxes. So, you know, it's very possible that the legislative session, as they have in the past, may make changes that make significant adjustments to this work. So, we're saying, based on what we know right now, this is what our taxpayers should be experiencing, which will likely feel like significant relief for many. And so, we're happy, obviously, about that outcome. Chip?
A comment relative, some of the changes...
Some of the changes the state put in because of the experience last year, which spread some of these adjusted type of things out. So in fact, we, and the rest of the state, would benefit a little bit from that to explain some of these numbers, not just our holding expenses to...
The context, you know, last year or this year too, at a statewide level is that there was an initial 5% property tax cap. If you kept per pupil spending below legislation of all of the rules surrounding it, the elimination of the cap and the implementation of the discount plan. Instead, budgets failed across the state at a historically high level. Spending cuts happened in order to help those budgets pass in the second or third try. And as a result, spending went down. The discount shrinks 20% every year. And so you can imagine that is costing the state 20% less than it did last year. And so because of that and the spending cuts that led to the budgets passing in their second or third times, there's a relief factor on the ed funds leading to what we saw come out as the initial property yield and, you know, in its first version. And some of the indicators that it might stay where it is and not move too much from that initial position. It's an optimistic forecast, but it's, you know, it's one that we are happy about because it obviously leads to taxes going down. But it also, I think, you know, we have a spending plan here that could tolerate it going up in order to receive a correction if the state budget sites it one way or the other without flipping things from one side of the line to the other as far as the ultimate tax burden on ACSD.
Joanna and then Steve, please.
I have a question that I think revolves around Block 7. And I'm trying to reconcile sort of how historically we've looked at the budget in terms of revenue and then offsetting costs. And my understanding is that the district does, receives title funds and receives, you know, weights for ELL and title funds for schools with a certain percentage of students with poverty. There, is there, and I can appreciate the transparency that you, we're trying to achieve here. Can you help me with like a line of like how we are guaranteeing the funds that the district is getting for certain criteria that they're getting spent to meet those needs? Like the schools that are receiving the title funds, the students that have ELL weights? I just don't see that direct correlation anywhere here. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Wondering if Courtney wants to speak to that.
Yeah, so through the grant management system, these grants are very closely regulated. And all the investments that we write, so through our poverty levels, we get a certain amount of money. It can be allocated to certain schools based on their need. And then within there, there's some wiggle room about how lunch funds are sent to different schools based on their levels and enrollment. But there's really strict rules for Title I and Title IV and Title II, which are the three title grants we write investments for. And it's a pretty laborious process of getting those investments passed because you have to adhere so strictly to all of the rules. And then once they are passed, there's an equally laborious process for spending those funds and making sure that you're going to the schools that they're going to.
What, is that, does that show up? Sorry, can I follow? In like the instructional specialist, like where does that show up when you look up? Oh, fine, thanks for finding the slide.
So we haven't yet for next year actually written our title grant, so I wouldn't be able to say where it's showing up in here exactly. But an instructional specialist is an example of something that would fit the allowable expenses of probably Title I and Title II and maybe Title IV, depending on what you're doing.
Our academic interventionists also fit that bill. Certainly, you know, after-school programming does. The multilingual professionals, those are showing up in student services. They're in Block 5. So those are allocated based on where those students are, which we don't know right now. You know, so those are usually conversations that are re-upped in the spring to make sure that they're going where they need to go. The rules around how you write those grants typically can shift from year to year. So what the right strategies are to put in that spending plan is usually a conversation, you know, that is a moving, a little bit of a moving target.
Can I add one thing to that that feels good to me? The intent of these titles or the title funding is that written into title grants. And because of that, you're just carrying that over year after year because you don't really know how to get out of that. And this allows us to say what's comparable across all of our schools and then what funds are allocated to specific schools based on need and to think a little bit more freshly about what we're putting in those title.
It's like supplement, not supplant. Role and, you know, in order to determine what is the supplement versus a supplanting resource, you need to...
Frankly, that's a pretty small number in terms of, I mean, we're talking pencils and notebooks here. And it's not the huge monster that it has been made out to be. That's the first observation. The second observation is, I love it that I was wrong about the long-term weighted average daily membership, that we got the stuff that you thought we were going to get for the poverty changes, that we actually got that. And I didn't think that we were going to. So I was wrong and good on you for catching that. And the third thing is, when we cut positions that we have not been historically able to fulfill, that goes into our surplus at the end of the year. So although it looks good for the budget, it may in fact cause a smaller surplus in the coming year because that was a lot of the surplus was based on those unfilled positions. And if we're cutting them out of the budget, we're not going to have quite the surplus that we have before, which is often used for expenditures around capital. So that makes me nervous.
But if the district wanted to be positioned for the bond and have the capacity to hold that, you know, for the taxpayers to bear that burden, then, you know, it's one way or the other.
I just wanted to point out that may not be a surplus like we are used to seeing.
Yeah.
Jamie, did you have a question? I thought I saw your hand go up.
Uh, it's okay.
Okay. Ellie?
Yeah, so I know I kind of asked this question earlier today in the other meeting, but with the pulling everything out of the building and then putting it all back in like this, but also with our request of like the, you know, staying under a 2% growth. If you hadn't had that cap there, what, were there other things that you would have put back in or you wish you could have put back in that you didn't?
I mean, our opportunities block is light, you know. It's, and I think, you know, keeping that point for art, you know, FTE, but using it as an opportunity, not putting it in the regular allocation of classes, but using it so that, you know, we can have different types of artists and residents work or opportunities that we have. I think that would be helpful. You know, I think, you know, that's probably the block that we have to work on the most and what can be put back in without undoing, you know, all of the percentages and the differences in reasonable ways. So I guess that's probably where I'd start. Chip?
I could comment also. I was sitting through the finance committee meetings and watching both superintendent and business manager or whatever.
Whatever your position is.
Yeah. Work. I was, I've been unbelievably impressed by how they're able to answer every question that we ask. And this is really complicated. And, I mean, I wasn't, I was a little flippant on that comment earlier, but it is really complicated. Not by our wanting to make it that way, meaning the districts, but also because that's the system we live in in Vermont and federal education and everything else. So I just compliment them by following what the board said. We had a long discussion, whenever it was, with the 2% or 1% or 3% or 2.5%. And I think we settled on the 2, which they wanted a number, and they followed it to the best they could. And I've been very impressed right along. I have, I've never had any suspicions that some, not that in a negative way, but that somebody didn't know what it was. But just as they answered the questions tonight, we asked the same general questions in committee, and they always knew the answers. I don't mean just numbers, but what does that line mean? Well, that line means this. So I compliment them on that. And I think the board should have great confidence that the people, and including obviously all the principals and everybody else that has to be involved with this, that this was a lot of work to get to this point, and I respect them doing it.
Jamie?
Yeah, here is my ill-formed question I passed on a little bit ago. I don't really know how to ask this, but, you know, I ran into someone at Shaw's today and then someone that kid pick up, and they're like, what's up with the cuts? You know? And so I'm just trying to, I don't know how to phrase this, but like what? You know, I remember you made a comment earlier about, and we got your letter earlier. Thank you for that. Like what is the challenge there? And are we, how big of a challenge is it? And can we, like, you know, it was hard to follow all of your presentation. I mean, your presentation was great, Wendy. It was just like, it was a lot, you know? And I was like, what is the, is it the case? Do we end up missing something? And how big of a missing is that? I guess, like, you know, Steve was like, you know, is it 9.4 people? We don't really know yet exactly, right? Because all those people do stuff. And we can't just simply have other people do that stuff necessarily as easily, you know, necessarily. So like what, what is the challenge there?
I think there are many challenges, you know? And, I mean, I, you know, approaching a budget in a fiscally constraining time, you know, produces challenges. You know, we're not offering a level service budget, you know, where we're saying, we're going to stay, you know, take everything we have and just add it in again, you know, with those costs. And so anytime, you know, we're thinking about those things, there's, in part, we're thinking about, okay, what do we think we could reimagine our way through? You know, in order to be able to support our system, to be, you know, more financially sustainable and reach some of the goals that we are. So, you know, for example, the behavior consultant and behavior specialist position, you know, some of that is a streamlining of student services in order to be able to provide resources that help the universal piece. You know, the same thing with the classroom teachers. It's not going to be easy. Those changes aren't easy, you know? We have a lot of students who need to perform at different levels. And that's something that is, it's worth the work it's going to take to determine how we can make that leap together. And, you know, it's, there's no, there's no budget cut that's ever easy, you know, in this case. I mean, 11 and a half of those positions are unfilled right now. So to Steve's point, that's not, that doesn't mean that there aren't things that we have to watch. But in some ways, you know, at least eight and a half of those positions have been, of the positions that we are reducing in that bigger, longer list, you know, are positions that have been vacant for a while. So, you know, there will be things that will be difficult. My hope is that knowing now, we'll do good planning, you know, as a team. And we'll, and we'll work our way toward what we need to in order to be able to pick up those losses and move ahead in the ways that we need to.
So Ellen, I saw your hand, but is there, is there anybody else that wants to make a comment before Ellen goes up for a second time?
I do have a question. And it relates to the, I guess it's the Mike Dudek's position. What's the title for it? The support or the student response coordinator? So obviously, this plan provides for the additional student response coordinator position so that the Middlebury schools have those folks in place. I'm wondering how, can you just provide a little more detail on how student response needs are addressed in the rural schools?
Yes.
With those positions?
Yep. So, you know, we have, Vermont has laws around hazing, harassment, and bullying. And exactly how, ways that students respond to each other that fit those categories need to be taken care of. In the Middlebury schools, you know, where administration are working their way through several a week sometimes, you know, right? That they have to get down to the bottom of and handle in a manner that does, meets the compliance with the law, but also tries to build their community and whatnot. That involves family interactions as well as sometimes staff coaching and student, multiple student interactions and investigative work. So they're experiencing that at scale. In the smaller schools, you know, there might be one a month or one every three months or, you know, that are going on. And so, so I think, you know, the capacity that we're able to build at that, at the level in the Middlebury schools helps to make sure that when a principal in a smaller school has a situation that's coming up because it's not as routine, they can draw upon those practices. And things that are working can consistently be implemented in ways that are appropriate at smaller schools, you know, for those venues. They're not quite the same. So it really is a leadership resource that everybody will be able to take advantage of.
Anyone else before I go back to Ellen? And Jason's online, but he told me he wasn't feeling well, so I'm not sure if he's just listening or... But so Ellen?
Yeah, I had one observation, then I actually did have some questions for administrators, not to put you guys on the spot. But first is that it seems to me like this budget, in addition to being a shift in how we look at where money is being spent versus where money is coming from, is also from, if budgets are priorities, what we're prioritizing is student performance, right? I mean, not exclusively, but we're really focusing on how students are able to feel like they are supported, they belong, they have the resources that they need to perform the way we want them to be able to achieve. And I just think this board, this is not for discussion necessarily, but a glaring absence in our board structure is a committee or a regular focus on academic outcomes and performance. And I feel like we need that. If we're going to move in this direction from a policy standpoint, obviously, from a strategic plan standpoint, and then from a budget standpoint, I don't think we as a leadership board have structured ourselves to receive and retain the information that we need to really understand how the decisions we're making are affecting the schools and the kids and the staff. So I'm just throwing that out there and something that I hope we can keep engaging with as what the idea of that might look like. And then I would say to the administrators, we've heard, we've heard a lot from Wendy about how this was a new process of working with you all to figure out how to put the furniture back in the house. So I'm curious how this process has felt to you. And then, you know, cuts are pretty obvious here, but in general, how the outcome feels and how you're thinking about this in your buildings and with your staff and with the kids who you work directly with.
You're asking about our feelings?
I mean, I don't think there's like data. So, yeah, let's go with feelings.
Feelings, sorry.
Feelings are data.
I really appreciated the transparency of the different blocks this year and thinking about where the funding comes from, which for me was a new way of doing things. And I guess I appreciated that piece as well as the... I think it's helpful to have Block 3 be a kind of a clear comparison across schools because I think that it can be clear like where things are more equitable or more equal, I guess. And then thinking about, I found the process of looking at our data really valuable and inspiring really good conver-... and inspiring really good conversations among staff that have sparked already changes in practice in ways that I hadn't seen and feel really promising. I think Wendy asked all of us to give her our perceived gains and losses. And I think, and, and then like, I added like perceived unknowns. Like, there are a lot of unknowns, and I think that waiting is the hardest part in many ways. And I think that the work the behavior consultants bring to the job of allowing kids to be regulated enough to learn is really important.
I would agree that the process was different than a process that I've engaged in. And it was a powerful process. The way Wendy described it to us in the beginning, sort of like, what is your data telling you? Which we think about a lot in terms of instructional moves and instructional practices. We don't, we, I haven't experienced a budget process where we're thinking about that data in terms of how we set in our schools. So it was a different conversation. But it afforded me the opportunity to have really great conversations with our, like, curricular leadership team, our team leader group, and then individual departments. So those departments were talking about like, what, what do we need to improve student outcomes at Mums? And what would that look like without this idea that it was sort of rounded in the constraints, starting from a constraints place? It was, it was a powerful process. And I think it was really good for us as a school to think about it in that way and have those kinds of conversations. I also, and I think Mums has gone through a great deal of transition over the last couple of years. And every year, we get closer to like, stable. This is what we mean, from middle level, the middle level to look like for kids, the better. And we're, we're like getting there, and our staff is so committed. So that felt really great. I think at the end of the day, even if there aren't reductions in force or, you know, positions that are being reduced in the context of your building because of seniority, right? We don't, we don't really know what that, you know, who is impacted by that. And, and school, like, you know, we feel that, schools feel, feel that, individuals in, in schools feel that. And I'm sure every single one of us principals can say this, with cer- certain every single one of us can say this. Our teachers and our faculty and staff come to school every day really, really hard. And when we're having these kinds of conversations, it puts a great deal of stress on, on school communities. And, and taking care of each other is really important in that time.
I appreciate the transparency, the intentionality, the vision, and the lens, the equity lens of looking at things, figuring out the balance. Because it does take a lot, a lot of balls juggling in here all at once. We try to balance those out, there's no easy path. So just the effort and the work that folks have put into this, and the time and effort and the willingness to listen, to value what people are bringing to the table is very important. So that feels like a long, you know, steep curve. I definitely have seen that through this process.
I think it's a concrete example of something that can happen with this process. In Salisbury's case, which isn't facing reduction because we've had an increase in students. You know, really, there's a process of thinking about the idea of the kind of academic, curricular, kind of teaching leadership that could be provided by the new positions. I thought was interesting because it allowed me to step back and people who I was working with to step back and kind of say, okay, what value does a position give you? And as an example, I have an academic interventionist in Salisbury. We have an academic interventionist who's amazing, National Board Certified Teacher, real expert in literacy, has a lot to give to people. Does she get to maximize that role in the role of an interventionist? Where, yes, she's doing beautiful work with independent students, with individual students. But how does that work necessarily give more capacity to everyone around them? And when a colleague goes to a colleague, sometimes those positions matter. Sometimes the name of the positions matter. Oh, you know, and, and not that somebody's gonna necessarily take umbrage at it, but it's just a natural question. Why are you in here talking to me about that, right? I think I'm doing a good job. When you kind of look at it differently and say, okay, this is, we're building, this is even more of a team as we think about instructional practice. I thought that was a really good process to go through. It was eye-opening to me. It took me a couple of rounds to kind of see that, and go, oh, yeah. So I really appreciated, had we, had it just been a thing where it was like, I don't know, maybe propose something if you have a good idea, as opposed to really stop and intentionally go back and look, I don't know that I would've gotten to that place. So I found that really helpful.
Any other comments from the administrators or?
I, I think that Michaela and probably some others talked a little bit about some of the uncertainty that still sits in our system and the human impact of that. There are a lot of job titles up here that have, like, these slides have been prefaced by a lot of one-on-one conversations. And, and I think that as long as things continue to be uncertain through this process, which is inevitable, we're gonna have to keep attending to that human component. And, and we've been tasked with doing that appropriately. I also think that many people have spoken to how, we've been asked to go through a process that asks us to consider, what are the, what are the things we're trying to accomplish? And how do we use our resources to do that? And so I feel like we're gonna get to the other side of this uncertainty with something that was built with intention, and that feels affirming.
Board, does anybody else have any questions or comments? If not, we can, oops.
Could I ask one question relative to the next step? We've, it's been presented, we've discussed it, we looked at it. So what happens the next meeting?
In the next meeting, we have the Career Center presentation with their budget numbers.
Yeah, I know, but we-
And that goes into this.
That's true, but that's not gonna change radically, okay? It's gonna have a number, but there's already a number in here that is gonna hopefully be in the range of, they'll talk to us.
Well, we're hoping, yeah. We haven't seen their numbers, so we can't say much.
Well, I know, I know that, but I meant ideally, ideally, once we hear that presentation and we see that and it's plugged in in a way that we, we could, we could approve a budget with the next meeting. Is that true?
That's true, positively, yes. We'll prepare so that if you feel comfortable doing that, you'll be able to do that and approve your warnings and so on and so forth ahead of time.
Matt, what number are you using for the Career Center?
10.
10? You may be pleasantly surprised, so.
That's kind of-
No guarantees. I don't wanna steal her thunder, but fast forward two weeks.
Anyone else have any questions, comments, administrators? Oops, I guess I have.
One last, just for administrators, if you could share, if you have had conversations with families, parents, asking questions about the budget. What are you hearing, you know, as people are walking through the doors of your school and your hallways? Are people asking questions, expressing concerns? I mean, obviously, this is kind of the first, fullest picture that we've been able to present to the community, and hopefully we'll get people showing up to the January 9th opportunity. But I'm just curious if you all have heard or have been asked any questions or had any concerns here.
I spoke with, I met with our parent group and Dr. Baker. We met together. And they had some questions, and then they expressed appreciation for understanding the why. They said they have often, you know, even for those who dig into the budget, they are given the details of the budget, but not the why. What is the value that is being expressed in this budget? And they expressed real appreciation for that. I'll say on a very brass tacks level, I, as someone who is new to the small school world, there was a clarity to this algorithm of 10, which is that in order to run a standalone class, there needs to be 10 little bodies in there. And so that was helpful in conversations with both staff and families about, look, this is what it means. It's not about whether we like these kids or whether we like these teachers, or it's about, we have to have some sort of parameters for what our, our class sizes are. We're one of those schools that's right on the, you know, we could flip either way. And so we had a conversation about how that would work. And again, both staff and families just expressed appreciation for understanding all that. And they all kind of just went, oh, okay, got it. Thank you for keeping us posted.
I would add that conversations I've had, you know, the whole in Rippton, I think, you know, the conversations are less about budget exactly, but about structure. They're about what are we doing with this? And I think one thing to keep in mind as we look at that is that there are some unsettled questions. You know, this could make it look subtle, but that, that question of kind of, what does that look like? If you send out the, the survey and ask kindergarten's first graders, people come up them out. What happens then? What if it doesn't? So I think from, from my perspective as administrator, when we think about what's the community asking you about, you know, that's, that's right there.
There is a halftime instructional specialist in Rippton, too. Did I say that before?
I think we might have missed that one.
It was the one, that was the, it's always the last one that you can't remember. You know what I mean, that you say, so, yeah.
Well, thank you, administrators, for all of your patience to getting to this point and for all of your hard work that you've put into this budget building that has kind of like turned everything on its head and hope that we didn't lose any furniture that you really had value to when you pulled it all out of the building and put it back. Boy, definitely thank you all for all of that hard work, and the students will thank us in the end, I hope. Board, do you have any other questions or comments for the administrators before I let them go home for the night? No? So thank you again, administrators. It's always a pleasure to have you here. Come more often, it's like.
We're watching.
Oh, okay, watch from home then.
Come from your home.
Thank you again. Next on our agenda is, Barb normally has a chair report, but since Barb is in France with the little grandbaby I get to give it, so she aptly called it Board of the Vice Chair. So we have a couple of things on here. The first one is the Superintendent Evaluation Timeline and Process Update. As you know, we're working through a new evaluation system that we agreed to earlier this year. So our evaluation timeline is going to be slightly different this year. So the first piece is, is that Dr. Baker has agreed that by January 27, she will send to the board her self-evaluation based on what we said that we wanted her to accomplish this year, or what we'd like to see done. She's gonna write up how she feels she's done, where things are at, what things haven't been quite gotten to yet because of other things and why, and she'll send that to us. We also, as a board, use the online tool where it was opened up and we could input information into the computer, you know, saying how we felt Dr. Baker had done around budgeting and how she had handled community issues and different things like that. That window will again be opened up. The last day that that window will be open for board members to comment and give feedback will be February 7th. It will not be extended. That will then give the executive board time to take all of the wonderful comments that we know we have coming and all the information that you have sent us, and we'll consolidate all of it. And then we'll review it one last time, the executive committee will, on February 17th. And then all of that will be sent out to the board and to Dr. Baker, all at the same time. The board will get it as a confidential email, so that means that you can't print it, you can't forward it to anyone. You can read it. And then the culminating activity of this will be on February 24th. We will have a board meeting, but it will mostly be an executive session. And we will have Dr. Baker with us, and it will be a conversation about how the process went, what things, you know, we really appreciated about the process, what we thought could maybe improve on. You know, it's a first year with a new process, so how can we make things better for not only ourselves, but for Dr. Baker as she works her way through it? So that is like the evaluation loop. And then the very last piece is that the executive board would then have a final conversation with Dr. Baker sometime after February 24th. But before the new board, or so, somewhere in there, before the new board is settled. So it doesn't really give us a lot of time. So those are the dates, so be watching your email. Then I also have some dates that I need to give you. So I might want to take out a pen. January 9th, there's a community engagement, which is online, which I'm pretty sure Trish will give us a complete rundown on in a few minutes.
No more, yeah.
I've been told that will start at 6:30, so we can all do that from the luxury of our living rooms. January 13th, we will have the Career Center here with a presentation. We will also have the board agenda set so that if we are in a good place, we can finalize our budget as well as the warnings for the annual report. But also, please remember, folks, on January 13th, you will need to dress up. Because someone sitting here in the audience is always loves to take our picture. So that will be Board Picture Night. So make sure your hair is all, all done up.
I'll make sure to have that.
We will do that first for you, Emily, so you don't have to stay all night.
That's great.
So that is the 13th. The 17th, if we need it, would be a hybrid meeting at 5:00. It's, since it's hybrid, you can do it from wherever. We also recognize that that is the start of a holiday weekend. Hence, if we need it, we would, we want to start early. And then the very last date that I need to give you all is Annual Meeting. It's February 25th. And that is through state statute that there are so many days in a calendar that we have to back up before Town Meeting Day. And so that will be February 25th, Tuesday. We're presuming it's here at the high school, possibly the band room, but stay tuned.
Do we know what time that would be?
Uh, 6? I feel like it's traditionally-
7.
Yes, I know, I mean, it's normally 7.
Wait, what time is the 4th? February 4th? Do we not have something February 4th? 24th?
24th.
24th.
January 24th.
January 24th. That would be like a regular board meeting.
Okay.
So we would start at 6:30.
January 24th, great.
Opening it, and then maybe-
Wait, no, what?
Oh, wait a minute.
Isn't it the 17th?
It's the 13th.
So, okay, let's go. So the evaluation piece-
Yes.
All right, the evaluation piece has, on, on 1/27, January, Dr. Baker will email us her self-evaluation.
Okay.
On February 7th is the board's last date to weigh in on the information that Dr. Baker has presented us.
Yeah. Yeah.
On February seventeenth, the executive committee will review all the data and then sometime that week, notice there's no date because never know what might happen, sometime that week, but before the twenty fourth, you will get a confidential email.
Okay.
And then on the twenty fourth, we will have a conversation with Dr. Baker around the evaluation and the process.
So that is probably what.
On the twenty fourth, yeah. Okay, so what time is that?
That one would be six thirty.
Great.
And then the following night is the annual meeting, which starts at seven.
Okay. What was the thing that was going to start early, though? Is that the seventeenth meeting?
So the seventeenth is a hybrid meeting and we're hoping to start at five. Wanting to acknowledge, yes, it's a holiday weekend. You probably all don't want to be spending it doing board business on a Friday night. So start early if we need it.
Yeah.
Get done early.
That's not a full board meeting, that that's just to approve the budget if we need it.
If we need it. So in other words, if on the thirteenth, if after the Career Center presentation and everything, we're we look at the budget again and we're like, okay, this is something we're okay with and it's good to go, it will be warned such that we could approve the budget and the warnings that need to go to all the town reports that night. Okay? So speaking of the annual meeting, one thing that the board normally knows, but this year I don't think anybody's really paid any attention to it, is other than Chip, who kindly told everybody in the world that he was leaving us, so he has seatings up for grabs, but who else seat is open this year?
There's five people.
So Joanna's, Steve's.
Brian.
Jamie's. Oh, and Brian's?
Brian, yeah.
Okay. So just so the general public, so Brian, Chip, and Steve are all Middlebury. Jamie is Waveridge and Joanna is Rippton. So those would be the communities that would be.
And are all of you guys rerunning?
Chip is not.
Right, other than Chip.
And I sent that letter honestly just to make sure that responsible people could know that, okay?
Yeah.
At a time when they would want to maybe look into running.
Yeah, it was a very nice letter. Call me by surprise, but I I knew that that's what you were thinking.
Wasn't off the cuff, but I mean, it was. But I mean, you know, we do want really good people.
Yeah, we do.
Who are just what I described, open-minded and pragmatic and going to help solve the big issue.
In answer to your question, yes, I intend to run.
Great. So thank you, and so please encourage friends and people to apply. It's not terribly difficult to get thirty signatures.
It's sixty.
Sixty.
It's sixty and.
Lot better than one time I had to do two hundred.
And the deadline for turning those petitions in is January twenty seventh.
Yes.
So that is approaching, so.
Right.
And those can be turned in to your local clerk, town clerk. They do not have to come into central office because then central office would have to get them somewhere else, so. Okay, that is all that I have under the report of the chair. I do understand that we have two board reports, one communication engagement, Trish.
Yep.
So as Suzanne said, and I'll probably actually have Wendy fill out the info, a little information on this, the ninth, which is this Thursday, will be a public Q and A Zoom only opportunity for for people to ask questions about the budget as it was presented tonight, as well as provide some feedback. So a chance for us as a board before we are faced with actually approving our authority's voting, a chance for us to get a little more public feedback. And so thank you Wendy for managing that. Would you like to share the actual details?
I think, you know, what we'll do is take some of the slide materials that we put together for tonight and 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 think about utilizing some of that material, having it handy if presentation is really what's needed or if people have had those and heard those and then they'd like to give specific input, then we'll structure that as a question and answer. So we'll be ready to be fluid and and and, you know, help people understand what they'd like to understand and then be ready to receive feedback that that people might have to give, you know, so. It's it's an hour and it's it's designed to just open, be an open dialogue.
Can I just ask a question relative, because this is different, okay, than what happens in the second part of the annual meeting, all right, which is a budget presentation and discussion, okay, about a fixed thing.
Right.
This is more saying, just as some of the commentators made earlier.
Yep.
About what we're hearing and what we're doing for the budget, just to make it clear, because we haven't always done this.
Right. This is the the pre finalized budget.
Right. I'm just making a point, though, that they are a little different.
Yeah.
Once it's fixed, then it's really to answer questions about what it is rather than what are you thinking.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Other than when it's fixed, they vote with their feet.
No, I know that, but I'm saying that it is a different.
Yes.
Situation.
Yeah. And then beyond that, as far as C and E Committee, I, we meet tomorrow for a extra meeting date to handle all the fun stuff going on. And one of the things we are talking about are MCTV, I was going to say MTV, you're just that much cooler, Drew, MCTV info spots. So as far as timing and getting information to the full board, I want to take this opportunity to just say, that is something we're going to be working on and developing, and if you for some reason have an issue with us doing that, now's the time to let me know.
So when you say full spots, is that for like you've done sometimes in the past where the candidates for board go and answer questions?
So no, we're, that would be something separate. When that has been done in the past, that was initiated, I believe, from MCTV. Well, I think maybe it was a combo, anyway.
I think it was MCTV, they did it on their own.
I think, yeah, it did come from that end. What we're talking about is what we tried to do last year and then got torpedoed when the state changed all the rules. Yes.
We had even filmed it.
Yep, it was all ready to go and then it was completely wrong. So we will be talking about this some more and trying to put information together, but I think similarly to what's going to be happening on Thursday, it will be pulling heavily from this presentation and kind of being more selective and and trying to clarify some issues for the public around budget development, but also the how the taxes are working and rely on my fellow committee members who understand that so, so well because it's been presented to them more times than to me. Yes, so that that is where we are looking to move forward. So if you have any any feedback for me.
Do you know, I know the January nine thing went out and all the, you know, the newsletters, it's online on the website. Do you know, did we post anything on Front Porch Forum for it?
Yeah. I, so I did a Front Porch Forum post last week in the newsletters. It's on all of the, it's on the budget page, it's also on the homepage of all of the websites.
Yeah.
The one thing I want to note is that since it's a public back and forth, we set it up as a meeting, and I think because of all the Zoom bombing that happened a few years ago of people getting in, we need to password protect that. So anybody with an ACSD address will go right in, but if you don't have an ACSD address, that password is ACSD. So oftentimes, the beginning of those meetings, you guys are all receiving a lot of like, I can't get on messages, so that should be your response.
Is that capital letters or small letters?
ACSD, yeah. And that's listed everywhere.
I know it's on the website.
Listed, it is, but that tends to be the biggest.
And Zoom bombing is still real because we talked about it at a meeting that I was at, and then all of a sudden we got bombed, and it was like, whoa.
And I also created a Facebook event so you can share that when you're.
Oh, perfect.
Great.
Thank you, Emily.
Anything else, Ms. Trish?
That's, we're we're going to be putting together our newsletter information, so that'll be coming up, but, you know.
Is that what you're?
Yes, right, I don't know.
All right, so now we'll move on to Jamie. And so Jamie, the one thing I'll let you know is that the next time we could see this policy would be in February for a final read.
Sad.
Sorry.
That's fine. Anyway, so we saw this policy last meeting. We, the policy committee met after that meeting to try to respond to people's thoughts and concerns. I can, I'm happy to walk through briefly, just so everyone remembers this policy, the most interesting parts of it, the most parts that we debated most last time are the parts that come in the policy contingency section, specifically contingency two and three. And basically what we did here, we met, we met with Wendy also, and we, so the the yellow language is new from last time. Is that correct? Yes. And so we tried to specify in here the extent to which the district will sort of make every effort to meet people's transportation needs. While while nonetheless stating that, you know, under certain circumstances, we we perhaps could not. We did specify that the superintendent will take quote equity considerations into account ensuring compliance with D six and all other policies that this would impact. You know, one thing I'll I'll say about this is that we saw today in the budget presentation, especially Wendy's, like D six appeared a couple of times. And I think I think as this has evolved, we've just gotten to be a little bit more aware of how significant this policy is, has been driving other stuff, too. And at least I'll speak for myself, that that's become more real to me. And so the general spirit of this, in my opinion, is that it is the result of a lot of work and thinking that we think will be. You know, we don't know how much it will be used in in many circumstances, but it seems to be a working, a useful contingency that we've come up with, not perfect. I think we're all on the committee to some extent in agreement that we like this version and also all under no illusions that it's perfect, that and that it solves our all our problems. It does solve some problems, and there are problems that are really important and that need to be solved. And so that, for that reason, I think, you know, we think it's good. I don't think what else new can be said about it.
Doesn't it solve the problem that we designate the, because that was the issue that came up, is that the superintendent didn't have a policy to be able to utilize to help with the class size problem?
We had a policy, we didn't really have a.
A remedy.
There was no guidance.
There was no guidance.
There was no guidance, and so the superintendent couldn't actually take it by the horns, although maybe with our advice, too, but.
Yeah.
Didn't have any way to do it, so.
I think this, right, lays out like a a plan.
So that's what I'm saying, is it doesn't solve always a problem.
Right, 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 right.
At least it directs a way to try to deal with the problem that's.
Correct.
More in stone, yeah.
I think I think that's right.
Jason has his hand up. Oh, Jason?
Oh, Jason. Jason came to our last meeting, too, so.
Jason, can you hear us?
Yeah, I was just going to jump in and say that I joined the policy committee's last meeting and because I had concerns about like the equity piece of this and being able to implement this policy equitably, and Dr. Baker addressed all of my concerns completely. And so I think I have great confidence that Dr. Baker and the administration will implement this in an equitable fashion, and so I am in support of this as it is written.
So the reason, Jamie, I said that we won't be able to see this because we meet again on Monday and it has to be worn ten days.
Right.
So we can't warn it in time, so we'll warn it for February.
Don't we have another?
Don't we have a meeting?
On the seventeenth.
Oh, not on Martin Luther King Day. It's because we would be meeting on the twenty.
Right, exactly, yeah. The seventeenth is enough time, but it's a continuing meeting, we may not meet.
But we don't have a twentieth meeting.
No.
Right, okay.
Which is.
Well, yeah, that's fine.
Aren't we the second and fourth Sunday? So wouldn't we typically have a meeting on the twenty seventh?
No.
So we we discussed it at the executive committee meeting, so it's normally the second and fourth, but we figured that we've already met twice.
Yep.
Possibly a third one, and we have the online piece, and we're like.
Seems like a lot.
Oh, we're, we just need to give the board some nights back.
That is.
January twenty seventh, we don't have a meeting.
January.
It'll be February tenth is our is our first February meeting.
Great.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, okay, thank you.
So that's the next time that will be, it'll be a month before we.
Right, okay.
All right, so we are now at our second public comment period. Whoa, 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 whoa.
Hold on.
There may be.
Well, so can I just get, so so thanks, thank you, Jason, for chiming in, I appreciate that. I feel like, so the next step of this of this, if people are seem cool with it, would be the second read and the final read, which we could adopt it at on February tenth.
Yeah.
Great. And I, so I will clean up this version, make it look much better, send it to Darcy so that the next time we'll read it weekly. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
I have the comment.
I I agree that this does solve a critical problem, and I think the last time, or when we went through this issue in the fall with Rippton, I recall many of us saying, we can't let this happen again. And so I appreciate that there is a process that can be followed. I do still want to, and I know I am a broken record about this, but I still want to just say on record that I think the committee should have, and I will be prepared to propose this as an amendment, to push for twelve students as the class size minimum. Again, looking at our broader strategic plan, long-term, data-based transparency, all the reasons to enable our district to communicate and convey student achievement data without restriction or concern about privacy for those class sizes that are single grade classes. I think that's that's the direction we should be moving in, and I think, I do think we have an opportunity to take care of that now while this policy is open. So I just want to say that. I strongly advocate for it. I don't think there is reason to, or sort of pedagogical reason to keep it to ten. It seems to me that, you know, especially after this budget presentation with all the emphasis on student achievement and data gathering for student success, that parents should be able to, and the community and board members, everybody should be able to see the data without having to go into special session. So I'm just going to say that again and continue to advocate for that.
Mary Heather, are you are you suggesting twelve students in a single grade? That the policy should say that there's twelve, minimum is twelve students in a single grade?
Yeah.
There were whole schools where that couldn't be.
So.
No, no, I guess, I I think it should be a class minimum with the understanding that, yes, there are some schools that have split classes, yes, that is true. I do think then as we work as a board for the longer term solution for how we're creating our catchment areas for our schools and, you know, examining possibilities with that, I think that we should be moving toward a situation where we can report the data of our students. That's just, to me, a fundamental responsibility of a public school district. That's just to me a fundamental responsibility of a public school district. And um to refuse to do that and to refuse to consider to do that um because uh of the ongoing um sort of configuration that we have had over the years, which has not demonstrated um meeting our academic success expectations for our students. It's not financially feasible. So I just feel like there's not good reason to not um move toward a policy, a class size policy that enables our district to publicly report on our students' um performance.
Yeah, I just as a point of clarify, clarification, I don't disagree pragmatically. The only um grades in Addison Central in the in the elementary school that have twelve students in a single classroom, outside of Mary Hogan, are four classrooms in Cornwall. That's all. Every other classroom we have, I believe, unless Courtney corrects me here in a minute, does not have twelve students necessarily in a single grade. I might be wrong about a couple, you know, there might be a couple sleepers I'm not thinking about, but generally speaking, that's not quite where we are. So so achieving what you're asking for would would require perhaps uh uh the recon- type of reconfiguration that, you know, the the committee might be thinking about, but achieving that in this moment through this policy, I I would not be able to do that.
Right, no, and I guess what I'm saying is, I understand that our current configuration has a lot of split classes, that the state, the state's requirement is not met. I understand that. Um I guess what I'm saying is, I I think it's reasonable from a financial perspective, long-term sustainability perspective, um to have twelve be a a minimum number for classrooms. Recognizing that from a long-term perspective, it's, it sets us in in a position to be able to say, okay, do we want to be able to report data for our our cohorts publicly as a public school district? That that seems like something that if we are talking about transparency and aligning with our strategic plan and um it it just, to me, it seems like it's it's moving us in that direction. Um I recognize that that may take time and obviously that would take some, you know, reconfiguration, but I think um there's two important reasons to push us in that direction and and I I I just, I guess I keep insisting on at least discussing it and not just saying like, oh, well, we're not gonna deal with that because, but I I just don't see the justification for ten except for, I mean, I think it's okay to say um to have a split, a split grade class of twelve rather than ten. I don't think that's going to have as wide sweeping impact. Um our current um configuration that is being proposed for this, for this next year is an average of fifteen kids a class.
There are schools where there won't be twelve kids in any grade.
Point of order, point of order. I don't believe you have the floor.
No, Mary Heather's still Give me your spiel. Ellen, I'll get to you once Gray Heather is done. And then Steve.
I am done.
You are done?
Yeah.
Ellen?
Um I uh there are, there are schools where no grade has twelve kids in it. So so I I actually would say, I think it's a mischaracterization that the committee has refused anything or has not discussed anything. Trust me, we have discussed everything. And part of what I believe we want to bring to the board after hopefully we can get through the D six policy or even at the same time, is is thinking about, with big thinking about reconfigurations. Not to make decisions about that, but to try to decide as a board, a process by which we engage with a much bigger conversation. My concern is that if we rewrite the D six policy right now in this year to say a minimum of twelve, everything I, like Jamie was saying, the presentation from Wendy, all these conversations are dr- directed towards bringing us into compliance with D six. If we change D six this year to say a minimum of twelve kids in every grade, most of our elementary schools will be out of compliance.
I'm not saying in every grade, I'm saying in every class.
But you can't report data
I know that.
For a combined class.
I'm sorry, I'm out of order.
So there, there are many schools where you still couldn't report that data. And if we're directing the superintendent to meet that compliance, to report data, then I think that blows up anything we could do thoughtfully to talk about reconfigurations. I think making that a goal for how the district is organized is incredibly valid and something we have talked about as a committee. But to modify the policy right now to reach that goal is like a domino effect into other things that I don't think we're really prepared to do unless it's suddenly shuffling kids around the district all over the place to try to get to where you could report data in every single class.
We didn't do Steve in the backseat, Steve. Oh, sorry. Jason, I'll get to you.
Okay, um so when someone says that there is no way to do this in the elementary schools, uh the rural elementary schools, there is, um and it's consolidation, it's another topic we refuse to address. Um consolidation would in many ways bring a lot of those elementary schools into compliance with a twelve-person class. Um and the second issue is um the only thing that we are really enshrining here that would be difficult uh would be the choice option. Because those students have been guaranteed, if they choice into this school, that they would be guaranteed an education in that school, um which we would then not be able to consolidate.
I don't read that that way.
Okay.
That matters. Uh it would, it would be, as long as the school exists, you know, I mean, they would be treated as those students are in that sense. I I think that's how it would be implemented.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, um and um the the last thing that I wanna say is I don't love contingencies two and three. I, that is my least favorite part of all this. And I agree with Mary Heather that we should be moving towards twelve people per grade, twelve students per grade level so that we can report data. Um however, uh to the point of, do we need something in there right now? We do. Um and uh if this is all we can compromise on, um we we will have to make we will have to make the good the enemy of the perfect, um because we cannot wait for the perfect policy here. Um we've gotta get something in place or we're gonna have another situation. Um because uh Ripton right now is allocated to have two teachers. If we don't get this in place, Ripton ends up with a K one, two, three. It's the only way to solve that problem. And I think that's even more untenable um than any of the policy contingencies that are here. So I would speak in support of the policy as written, um only from the sense that we need something uh and we can't make the perfect the enemy of the good.
Jason?
I'm curious, where did the ten student minimum come from? What is that based on?
I don't think it's um, it's based on much. I mean, it it was part of the ed quality standards at one point. I I honestly, I I don't think that you'd find ten showing up really anywhere. Um it it, I think it's probably designed to try to ensure that a baseline of of diverse perspectives and um and uh personalities in classes um in order to be able to to learn effectively, but but there's not research behind that number um that that, you know, I'm aware of.
If you go to the, my computer's not working. If you go to the policy, then click on the procedure, then click on the hyper, I just click on the hyperlink that links to that thing. It gives you a citation of where that, where those numbers come from. I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, but that is I believe it's a, what?
The source.
It's the EQS, but I, some of us remember when the EQS was developed and um I don't remember research being what was behind ten.
Okay.
Any, any actual C I N research, I think it was kind of common sense at that point, that that was a, that was if you get lower than that, then you are significantly jeopardizing group activities, kids' opportunities to work with more than one type of student, so on and so forth. Possibly least restrictive environment if there are a number of students with I E Ps, that kind of thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ellie?
Yeah, I, it does, it does seem rather problematic to say that it's not based on any research, but then to say that it's significantly jeopardizing these things, like I feel like especially in if we're gonna be using this number as a reason to close a classroom and move kids to other schools, like we should find some research and point that has some guidelines and base it off of.
Sorry, so I will weigh in. Being the acting chair tonight, I I've tried to stay out of it. Um it's gonna be very hard to find research based on class sizes that will give you a good, I mean, every researcher will say one way or the other. So I'll just say that, um but the other thing that I'll weigh in on saying is that as long as I've served drunk boards, every single board I've been on has always wanted to build a budget based on how the money is being used to promote student achievement and to be able to show it. We've never been able to have that conversation in public session. And until recently, we've never been, a board that I've sat on has never been able to see as much data as we saw the other day in executive session. Um and it really kind of criminal that we can't tell our public and they can't see that the harder money that they're putting out to support our budgets is actually promoting and moving students forwards because this class sizes are small and we can't do that. That's all I'll say. Ellie and then Mary Heather.
I just want to follow up. What I'm saying is, not that I feel like we have to have that research, but I feel like if we're implying that it's best practice or something around this ten number, we need to have research or we should be openly saying we collectively decided it was common sense and not implying that it is best practice when we don't have that.
One of the nice parts, I think, about this policy is that it allows for um superintendent judgment, if you will, which is really the judgment of all the people that are closer to the situation than the superintendent around, um okay, if it's nine, is it okay to go with nine? Or is it, if it's twenty-one, is it okay to be twenty-one? You know, has anything really changed here or 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 not? You know, and and the previous policy and procedure did not allow for that kind of thinking. So so to your point a little bit, there, it's, it depends, right, on the scenario. And and I, and I think our educators have have kind of good, good senses of those things often. Mary Heather?
I do just wanna clarify. I am advocating for taking this opportunity while D six is open, while we're discussing this, to institute twelve as our classroom minimum, recognizing that it puts us in a position to be able to report on those single grade classrooms. Um and also in our long-term planning, um if we want to um combine data for a couple of schools. It just puts us in a better position to be able to report out data um in the future. It, I'm not suggesting that this suddenly be a trigger to consolidate a school. I'm not suggesting that this be a trigger to um prevent a classroom that is less than twelve. Um I think this is, you know, obviously, this proposed policy does have the superintendent um discretion built into it, which I think is important and very valid. But I think what it does is it, it it gives us the opportunity to um prioritize reporting out of data that is what we're saying all of our decision-making is going to be based on. Um which seems to me the most transparent thing that you can do. Um and I I think it just positions us to be more sustainable from just a financial perspective and still allows us to have split classrooms, um but does put us in a position where if we decide, okay, the next step we wanna look at, like, how do we wanna create our catchment? It it just puts us in a, in a good position moving forward. And if we're really serious about solving some of those problems moving forward, I I I just wanna advocate for it. I do not intend to not vote for this um um solution. I'm just strongly advocating for taking the opportunity to uh position ourselves to be able to take the steps toward reporting um our student performance data as a public school district, so. So I just wanna clarify that. I I'm not advocating for a cascading trigger effect. That's not what I'm suggesting. Um I don't think now is the time to do that. And I totally agree with Ellen about, like, there needs to be a process for that and there needs to be. But I, but I do think we need to be thinking a little bit about the the big picture when we do this, um so.
I'll just say one thing, it's not really a direct response to that, but so the, what's coming next is the big picture thing. And this was uh part of the big picture thing we thought, but it turns out it's not. It's the interim big picture. And then as Eleanor, I think, was alluding to, the next thing on our agenda to bring to you is sort of this broader look at, I think, some of the same questions Mary Heather's raising, where we can, where I think having larger and longer-term discussions about sort of the future of the district, um at least from a policy angle, is necessary. Um about D six being open, like, D six wasn't open. It wasn't even one of the policies we had to look at. It just came up randomly at some discussion and all of a sudden it was like, oh, so, you know, this policy, I think potentially like a, a class-sized discussion, that's either based on a research or our own independent needs, whatever, you know, if you wanna go so willy-nilly, then that's, that will, I think that will come as part of the larger thing that we've been sort of keep, there's no suspense here. We keep alluding to it, but we never get a chance to present it. But so at some point we will, and then I think that will become, come clear. We wel- we welcome everyone's input. And I think will also entail a much larger community process, probably. And I think that some of the stuff you're raising could
Phone just said it was, it was debatable, so.
Siri, is this debatable or not?
I don't know why my phone is talking at me.
Anyway, I don't even know what's happening now, but that's, that's what I just wanted to put out there.
So tonight is um for feedback and information to the policy committee. Um I do wanna remind the board that even if we vote to approve this particular policy, we could turn right back around a month later and say, we really need to reopen D six and we want to see it with such, um but the other thing that Dr. Baker has said is that it's guidelines that it allows her flexibility and it gives her a process by which to set those class sizes. Um and that's all I'll, I'll say for that. So if there's any other comments, if there, whoa, Joanna?
I just need some clarity around sort of the timeline that this policy, I don't, my computer's dead. But my memory um is that there isn't like by this certain time that you need information, like
Correct.
Yeah.
What do you mean, what information do you mean?
In terms of what, how you are going to be moving forward.
That would be in the procedures that we would create if you pass the policy. So, you know, um if if you approve the policy in your first meeting in February, we would get right on it, you know, and and say, okay, by this time, you know, we would know, we would need to know the following. And then by this time, we would do the following and so on and so forth. So we would set out those steps so that that was, that was clear and we were able to move forward with that in mind. Oh, sorry, Laura?
Believe you had given us kind of a rough February-ish deadline for getting this policy hashed out for next year, so.
Right under the wire.
Kind of where we're at.
But no rough timeline going forward from February.
This, no, that, that would, that's basically operational.
Yeah.
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 Any other conversation, discussion, questions? Jamie, you look like you're pondering something.
I always, that's just my face.
Well, you chilled it, so I wasn't sure if there was something coming.
I mean, I, I, so I guess the thing is, so here's the thing, so to Joanna's question. So to Joanna's question, I think it's like, when, let's say we pass this policy on February 10th, or whatever it is. Great, February 11th, you're like, okay, let's, let's see if there's, does this apply? Yes, you know, what, what, what happens next? And then, um, you know, you, you, you and your team will say, okay, we need to know X by April, or it's a plan for the next year, right? When typically do you need to know? Like, in other words, the, the stakes of this policy are, can you fill a grade in Ripton or not?
Right.
To some extent.
Right.
And just, when does that in your work happen?
We would want, um, we would want families probably to, to give us a sense of whether that would be possible in March.
In March?
Yeah, early March, by, at the latest, you know, early March.
Okay.
You know, it, it, it doesn't take very long for people to give that kind of feedback.
Right, okay.
We'd probably open that window, you know, um, in early March, once we had a past budget.
Yeah, okay.
A lot hinges on passing a budget.
Does it?
Well, that just raised another question for me, because the budget, it proposes that Ripton has two classroom teachers.
Correct.
So if there, if it was possible to fill a grade, then they would need three teachers.
Yeah, and that's covered.
Contingency.
That's covered in, in our resources that we proposed. We, we understood that as well as Cornwall. You know, Cornwall is kind of on that bubble too, so, so we've prepared for that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, everyone.
Any more suggestions, thoughts for the policy committee? I don't see Jamie's hand up, so. All right, so, um, thank you all for that great conversation. We're now gonna move on to second public comment period. We have administrators in the room, but no public.
There's eleven public on Zoom.
Does anybody on Zoom have a public comment for us at this time? Please raise your hand. Hopefully we didn't put them on screen. Seeing no hands raised, we will move on to board reflection. Who would like to take it on tonight? Laura, would you like to do the board reflection?
I don't have a whole lot of voice.
Oh, okay.
I'm gonna pass.
Chip, would you like to take it?
Can I, in, in this reflection, um, period where it's sort of a, taking us the catch-all, Wendy, not to put another thing on your January plate, but I know, uh, you had said January's going to be the month in which you deliver your verdict on the, um, book challenge. Do you have any further updates on the timeline for that?
My guess is maybe the week of the 17-ish, yeah, so.
So after this, all this fun stuff that we're doing?
Uh, it's not so much that, it's that, you know, a hearing needs to be scheduled, and, you know, there are things that, that, and, and, you know, there, there are small children involved, so, you know, we're working in supportive ways. So, you know, if I think about how long it takes to really do things, I would say that's probably about the right timing. And that decision goes directly to the appellant. And then, um, it is up to her whether she chooses to appeal that to the board. So you may never hear another thing about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Steve?
Um, I just wanted to say that the public comments concerning hormone injection did not come out of the blue. That is a conspiracy theory that is currently floating around out there that schools are administering hormone injections for students that are, um, so. I, I know some people were surprised at that, but, um, that, that's where that came from.
I can assure you, we are not doing that.
It, it's like, we don't have enough nursing resources to hand out aspirin. We're not changing genders, um, so.
We're talking about changing.
Or even talking about it, or...
Reading books.
Okay, so, board reflection. Who would like to take it on, please?
Okay, I'll say something.
Sure.
The, I thought the budget process this year was really good. And, or, like, much improved. And I, I understand, the, the comment Wendy made earlier about a conversation she and I have with someone in this room, they were like, we don't have kids, we would just like to know why the budget is the way it is. And I was like, that's a great question. And, and I, I sincerely think that people, would they, should they read an op-ed or talk to somebody, they would be, they, we would be able to articulate, like, why it's so important that this budget is what it is, and how important it is that you support it. And, um, so I feel like, uh, and oft, I was really heartened to hear from all the administrators about that process too, and the difference that went into it. And so it just feels much different than it did last year. And so just a lot of props to all the folks who've been doing that work, and especially, is Matt still here?
No.
Good for him. But anyway, you know, and good job to him for explaining it in the way he's been doing.
So, and I'll just close on, we've had some great conversations. We've run late yet again. Hopefully the next time we will not meet so late. But I thank you all for all of your patience and all of your hard work. Putting together a budget is never easy, um, especially in the light of facing declining and needing to reduce, um, staff numbers. It's never easy, they're friends, they're colleagues. But thank you all again for all of your hard work. And, um, we will see you again next Monday. Same channel, yes, Mary Heather.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Doctor's second.
A lot of seconds, I'm not sure who actually made it.